Council hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate the work of the Richmond Hospital Accompaniment Response Team in the Richmond metro community. Created in 2009, the Response Team is a collaborative effort between Hanover, Safe Place, Safe Harbor, YWCA of Richmond, Bon Secours Richmond Health System, and the Virginia Commonwealth University Medical Center. The effort establishes a team of specially trained volunteers that provide patient advocacy and emotional support during forensic or medical examinations. These volunteers provide immediate response to patients in local hospital emergency rooms that require medical treatment due to sexual assault and/or intimate partner violence. Through the outstanding commitment and work of the dedicated member organizations and their volunteers, the Richmond Hospitality Accompaniment Response Team has served more than 900 people. Richmond City Council and Mayor Dwight C. Jones hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Richmond Hospital Accompaniment Response Team thanks its member organizations, volunteers, and community supporters for their work in helping to make our community an even better and safer place.
We especially wanted to point out the strong partnerships that the Y has along with the other service providers that are mentioned in this resolution and this award because it is critical that we realize that how essential it is that other partners participate and provide a great contribution. But of course, we especially want to thank the YWCA for the leadership that you continue to provide. And this service also is a supplement to provide to address the issues of violence as well. So again, we want to make sure that we pass on this award to your partners as well.
Thank you. Thank you again. And I'll just say, thank you once again. I will share this with all of our partners. Everyone will know the significant part that they play. We could never do what we do without our volunteers who are on call 24 hours a day, 365 days a year to provide this accompaniment to survivors at their most critical point of their crisis. So we could never do that without the citizens who are our volunteers. So it is a community initiative and a community effort. And last year, we had over 375 accompaniment calls in the Our Heart Region at VCU Health Systems and Bon Secours Health Systems. And that is an outrageous number and a number we shouldn't have. But it is a number that we have, and what we have is a system to respond to that. So we thank you for again acknowledging that. Thank you.
Our next recognition being presented by Counselor Parker Agilesta recognizes Richmond's Swansboro Elementary School on the occasion of its 100th year anniversary. Built in 1912 as Franklin Elementary School in what was then Chesterfield County, Swansboro Elementary School was included in the city of Richmond's annexation of land in 1914. During the school's history, it was closed in 1979 and reopened in 1980 to serve as home of the Richmond Public Schools Franklin Military Academy. After the Franklin Military Academy relocated to a new location, the building was refurbished and reopened as Swansboro Elementary School in 1986. Located in Richmond's 5th District, the Swansboro Elementary School building serves as a beloved landmark for the Swansboro neighborhood and surrounding community. Richmond City Council recognizes, honors, and celebrates Swansboro Elementary School on the occasion of its 100th year anniversary and brings this historic milestone to the attention of all Richmond residents.
Thank you. If you listen to the proclamation closely, you'll hear that the building was built in 1912 in Chesterfield County, and then it was annexed in 1914. But we are really fortunate to have a building and a community and the wonderful talented Principal Mizell and the faculty and staff of Swansboro Elementary School that has endured 100 years as a public education institution here in Richmond. There's a long history of being Franklin Elementary School to becoming Franklin Military Academy, and then in 1986 officially being designated as the Swansboro Elementary School. And it really does stand as an icon for the community. And so many of the students that have come through the walls have benefited from the education that is provided by the people standing here in the blue shirts and Principal Mizell's most recent leadership. They had a big ceremony at the school a couple weeks ago, and the mayor was there to issue a proclamation which we have brought down here. But the Swansboro Elementary School, I just want to say one last thing. I've spent a little bit of time with the students there, and I have seen some really inspired children. And kids only get inspired when they have somebody who can show them the way. And what I've seen has been a tremendous effort by a very talented staff. And I really commend all of the ones that are standing here today and those who will come in the future. In the meantime, we've got a lot of work that we can do to keep our 100-year-old buildings operational. And we, as city council, are committed to keeping your building safe and secure for you and the students going forward, and maybe we'll get to another 100 years. So thank you very much, Principal Mizell and everybody else.
Our next recognition honors and celebrates the 101st birthday of Edgar Duffy. This recognition was presented to Mr. Duffy previously at his 101st birthday party by Counselor Jonathan Balaus on September 28, 2013. Born on September 28, 1912, Mr. Duffy is a true Richmond treasure. Dedicated to public service, Mr. Duffy served as Richmond's resident for more than four decades, dutifully performing the important duties as an Assistant Richmond City Clerk from March 23, 1943 to December 1, 1974, and the Richmond City Clerk from December 1, 1974 to November 16, 1984. Richmond City Council and Mayor Dwight C. Jones hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Duffy on the occasion of his 101st birthday and thank him for the more than 40 years of service in helping to make Richmond an even better place. Mr. President, those are all of the awards and recognitions that I have for this evening.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Would you please review the list of amendments to tonight's agenda now?
The amendments to tonight's agenda are as follows. Item 1, Ordinance Number 2012-212 has been withdrawn. Item 2, Ordinance Number 2013-154 will be continued to October 28 council meeting. Item 4, Ordinance Number 2013-166 has been withdrawn. Item 7, Ordinance Number 2013-171 will be amended and continued later on this evening to October 28 council meeting. Item 15, Ordinance Number 2013-205 will be continued to November 11 council meeting. Item 33, Ordinance Number 2013-112 will be amended and continued later on this evening to October 28 council meeting. Item 35, Ordinance Number 2013-199 will be continued to October 28 council meeting. Item 36, Ordinance Number 2013-207 will be continued to October 28 council meeting. Those are all the amendments that I have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additional amendments by council members? Well, Madam Clerk, seeing none, would you please call the question?
Vice President Robinson, we make that motion to amend the agenda as read.
It moves, Madam Clerk.
Counselors now voting on Vice President Robinson's motion to amend the agenda. Mr. Balaus?
Aye.
Ms. Razziano?
Aye.
Ms. Moesby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agilesta?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuel?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to move on to the regular agenda. There's only one paper on the regular agenda. The SUP for Captain Buzzies has been continued. If anyone is here for that, you're always welcome to stay. But if you have other things you'd like to do with your evening, please note there won't be a public comment period on that tonight as the paper won't be heard. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce Paper Number 34?
Yes, Item Number 34 is Ordinance Number 2013-142 to amend the City Code, Section 110-136, for the purpose of increasing the care service fare and providing that care para-transit service not required by the Americans with Disabilities Act will be provided only from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday.
Thank you very much. Before I turn it over to one of the patrons, I just want to let folks know, there's a sheet available in the back that shows four options. Option 1 and 2 were introduced in July. They were the original two ordinances that were introduced and were under consideration. Option 2A was the amended version when it came out of the Committee for Land Use. And Option 2B is the only version under consideration tonight and shows the changes that we've made as a result of listening to speakers at past public hearings and working with the GRTC. In addition to that, there is a fact sheet available to the public, and it's back there in the back, that helps clarify some of the information that's in this paper. Lastly, please note, everyone is welcome to speak, residents of Henrico, Chesterfield, and of course, the city of Richmond. But it's important to note, the changes that are voted on tonight, if they pass, would only apply to Richmond residents. If you live in Henrico, similar changes will be considered by the Board of Supervisors sometime this fall, but decisions made tonight will only affect Richmond residents. Lastly, when you do come up to speak, usually we just ask for you to give your name for the record, but if you can help us understand where the regional opportunities for working together are with Henrico and Chesterfield, I'd appreciate if you'd also say your jurisdiction. You're not required to, we just appreciate it. Mr. Balaus?
Thank you, Mr. President. This issue's been going on for several months, and I like to think that we have listened to a lot of the concerns of the speakers. They have been very diligent in coming down here and telling us what their concerns are, and we will certainly be welcome to hear what they have to say tonight before we vote. However, the current budgetary constraints that we've all been dealing with the last few years have led to the need for some changes, not just in GRTC, but in government in general. One of those was evident earlier this, I guess it was just last month. We allowed GRTC to look at their route system on an economic basis and not a political basis. That was a change that hopefully will lead to more efficiencies down the road once they've had a chance to review the data. And this is a change that also is going to be considered tonight. It's unfortunate that anything has to change, but for the system as a whole to be sustainable, you have to look at the entire picture. GRTC serves 35,000 people a day, about travels, I think it's 123 buses at any given time in peak hours, a little less in off-hours, but it's an entire system that we need to consider, and it's important that this earlier council, a few years ago, I believe it was in 2008, made the hard decision to raise fares for the fixed route riders as well. Went from 125 to 150. So it's important to keep that in mind. It's not an easy decision to make, but it is an important one, and I would encourage, if counselors have anything to say before we open it to public comment, that's certainly welcome, but I really am anxious to hear from the people that have come down tonight to share their voices.
Thank you very much. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to this paper? If there are, would you please form a line behind the podium? And folks, what I'm doing by asking you to line up is to get a feel for how many speakers there are. Our rules allow for 30 minutes for folks to speak in favor and 30 minutes for folks to speak in opposition. What I like to do, and also that each person is only allowed three minutes, what I like to do is try to get a gauge on how many folks are in case we need to adjust that timeframe. I want to be fair by giving it the same amount of time to the first person as the last person. Are there any others apart from the line that wish to speak? And raise your hand if you're there. Anybody else that wish to speak in opposition to this paper, please raise your hand. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. We have 17 people at three minutes each. That does put us over the 30-minute limit. What I'd like to do is set it instead for 2 minutes and 30 seconds to try to give everybody a good amount of time still, but try to keep us within our rules. Unless there's an overriding vote by council, that's what we'll do. All right. Please state your name and your jurisdiction. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Snyder Roche. I'm the Executive Director for Virginia Advocates United Leading Together. We are a statewide organization, a coalition of disability advocates. Ed Turner is in the audience tonight. He's a longtime resident, 24 years. And really, I want to focus on our concerns being, I sent these in a letter to each of you, but I'd like the opportunity to just restate them. The changes will directly affect a vulnerable population. While Executive Order 55 issued by Governor McDonnell is aiming to concentrate efforts on employing people with disabilities in all sectors, state and private, the proposed changes to care transit could negatively impact those efforts. By either cutting service and/or increasing fares, the very core of the executive order's initiative, goals, and outcomes would be jeopardized in regards to people with disabilities being able to maintain current employment and to the many people trying to become employed as we try to close the unemployment gap. We have an abysmal unemployment rate for people with disabilities at about 70%. And the people that are employed do not typically hold jobs that are nine-to-five jobs. We don't simply fit into that category yet. That's what the executive order is aiming to do, but we're not there yet. So we need this. It's also a concern that any changes would likely affect the ability for people with disabilities to hold an actual integrated job amongst our able-bodied peers while also justifying the perception by employers that people with disabilities are not, in fact, candidates for real-world opportunities. It's often asked what your transportation is. Just in closing, I'd like to say that one possible solution in resolving the matter is for the city of Richmond to explore applying for a new Freedom Initiative grant offered by the U.S. Department of Transportation for innovative projects. I think that it would fall into that innovative project category, and I ask for no cuts in service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Tolliver. I live in the city of Richmond on the North Side. I like, the paper that I would like to share with, you can do on each side of council. These are my son's pay stubs. He's been working on his current job for the last four and a half years. And if you would see the amount of money that he makes now, and in paying a book of care tickets at $15 per book, and going up on it for either way, he can't afford it. He can barely afford to go to work now. But he's been on his job for almost five years, and the increase would make it virtually impossible for him to continue working. I also have an aunt who lives in Henrico who just became a dialysis person. She won't be able to go back and forth on dialysis, you know? And then myself, when I first became disabled, I lived in Henrico for about five years after living in Richmond all of my life. And when I lived in Henrico for five years, I didn't have medicine because I couldn't get back and forth. I struggled to get the information that I needed to ride the caravan. So I moved back into the city in order to make sure that I had transportation, at least for myself, and then knowing that I could depend on care to take him to and from work. And now that's going to be taken away, you know? And the pay stub, that's the reality of it. And if he loses this job by not being able to work on weekends, or to reduce his work hours, or even by the increase of the fare going to and from work, either way, he's out of a job. And that pay stub is a representation of a lot of the care riders. And that's not a lot of money. If you do have to increase, decrease, or whatever, could you please give them ample enough time to either relocate on jobs? And I mean, at least 50% of them, if not all. And it would take them at least a year to do that. And that's the reality.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
My name is Montague McGruder. I'm a citizen of the city of Richmond, and I've served on the GRTC and Transit Study Task Force. Recently, it's come to my attention that GRTC has stated that the reason why they made these propositions is because demand has increased 75% over the past 10 years. If I'm wrong, somebody correct me on that. But it doesn't make any kind of sense that you have to cut service when demand is going up. Just like with any other business, if demand is going up, you acquire the resources needed so that you can maintain the demand instead of having to cut demand in order to keep service levels. That doesn't make any kind of sense. And what also doesn't make any kind of sense is the fact that all these amendments made to this paper, and I haven't heard city council go back in the budget and say, "Oh, here's $500,000 that GRTC originally asked for to avoid all this." And I'm surprised to see that not only that, city council still hasn't taken any effort to be aggressive towards Chesterfield County and Henrico County. It's time to stop playing with these counties and putting on the kid gloves. It's time to take those gloves off. Hit them hard. Time to grab them by the ear and bring them in kicking and screaming and ask them why they have not been contributing to GRTC the way they should have. Because as I said in July, and will say again, that is one of the main reasons why GRTC is going through a lot of the stuff they're going through right now. If the local governments would actually step up and pony up, we wouldn't even be going through this right now. For those who are in Henrico, I said this in July, I will say it again. Keep up the fight. Your fight also goes into your county. If you live in Chesterfield or Henrico, go to your board supervisors and put your foot in their butts. Make sure they listen to you. Tell them, "Do not cut our service. Do not raise our fares." Because y'all need that to get into the city to work. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Folks, unfortunately, we can't allow clapping during this time. I have to enforce the rules fairly for everyone, both folks I agree with and those I don't. Otherwise, I wouldn't be being fair to everyone. Next speaker, please.
My name is George Harrison, and really, in my observation for the past two months of being a care van rider, the real problem is the waste. The reason this company is not making money, the owners are not seeing profit is, for example, at the Center for the Blind, they will send four vans there, one picking up each person, ride those persons to a destination. Waste. Same thing in the mornings. You can sit, ride those vans, and listen to the radio. The problem is not the drivers nor those using the service, but it's the routing and how the business is being operated. It's a lot of waste. Thus, now they want more money and they want to decrease the service. That's not the way to operate a business, and for city council to go along with that puts city council right along in the same boat with them.
Thank you, sir. Folks, I'm real serious about this. I got to be fair to everybody. Yes, ma'am?
That may not be enough to go around. Just pass out as many as you can.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Loria. I am a resident of North Side. I'm here speaking on behalf of a friend and fellow advocate, Kami Keck, who is not able to be here tonight. She is an advocate who has cerebral palsy and has asked me to share her story. Several have described her story as heroic, inspiring, and tragic, and I ask you to listen to her words. Her words. I'm a full-time student working a minimum wage retail job where I make about $800 a month, and I pay my own way through school. My job requires me to work every single weekend unless I ask off. I work holidays and evening shifts usually ending at at least 10:00 p.m. In order to live, I work around both my school schedule and my work schedule. I pay nearly $300 a month for care transportation services, which I use seven days a week in order to have a means to live. If I used private transportation, and this has been researched, it would cost me about $300 every two days, which is not affordable. She also has no access to public bus. After the last meeting, I had the privilege of speaking with Lisa Towns and Ronald Hurst one-on-one. When I explained the severity of the situation to them, they made the comment, "You literally work to pay for transportation." I replied, "Yes, ma'am, I do," while still trying to pay my bills, educate myself, and make a better life. So the bottom line is this: You cut the hours of service for transportation or increase the fee, and you cause me to have to cut back hours at my job. Therefore, I will not be able to make ends meet. I hope you understand the severity of the situation. In closing, I'll show you a photo which shows you the reality of the situation of how tight a budget is. Those of you who have it, this is my refrigerator after I've been paid. As you can see, it is empty. I had paid for transportation. I had paid for rent. I had paid for medical bills. I was unable to pay for food. I went without food for about two weeks, and that's a norm for me. Some days, I don't eat just so that I can pay my bills. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your attention. Kami Keck.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Maureen Kelly. I live in the city of Richmond. I use the Care Transportation Service for basic activities of daily living, for social activities, and for educational opportunities. I am sad to see the rate raise is coming, but when I was here the last time, I asked that you not leave us with nothing. The rate raises are certainly going to hurt. They are going to curtail my transportation activities. However, I do believe that if you are going to raise rates, that you have to serve us and that the service cannot be cut off at 8 o'clock at night, that it needs to run the same 4:30 to 12:30 that the other services run. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Carla White. I'm in the city's 8th district. I'm very much opposed to the price increase and time change of extended services for care para-transit service into Henrico County. I have been using this service for over 10 years. I have been before council, GRTC board, and other transit meetings to fight for improvement in... in care's operation, hours of service to Henrico, and expanded service to counties not being served by care. Myself and others who depend on care service for employment, medical, social, and other basic needs and wants applaud council's decision to extend hours of service to Henrico, and I believe it was 2008. This increase, uh, this increased the employability of individuals and, and increased choices in medical care, education, worship, shopping, and et cetera that Richmonders who use this service did not have before. We need to keep moving forward. It saddens me that we are here tonight to talk about service to Henrico, increase in price and limited hours. A round trip to Petersburg or King's Dominion currently express buses by, used by GRTC are not $12. Why is council asking care users to pay $12, $12 for areas of service that we have been accustomed to? I believe the increase in price and limitation of hours of service is a prejudice against individuals with, individuals who use this service. And council is using the Americans with Disabilities as an excuse to hinder progress and not to move Richmonders forward. Council should be about enabling Richmonders who can, who have, and who want to contribute to a better economic tomorrow for everyone. This is possible through care services with needed improvement and expansion. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Rosalind Burns, and I'm from Henrico County. I'm here to stand to say that I catch the caravan for studies, activities, education, also physical and medical. And I have a mother that used the caravan itself. About four years ago, four to six years ago, she was unable to use the caravan because it didn't come in the county. Now that it's extended, she can use it to do her activities, go to medical and do her education, also with me. But if you take away that, we are stuck. And it's unfair for anyone who lives in the county, which I am going to talk to my councilmen and go to the city and see what's going on with the both. But for those to raise it for $12 for one fare from the county to the city, it's unfair to us. And I think you should overlook what's going on with all you all and look what's going on with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Patrice Morris, and I represent Western Henrico County. I'm opposing to this $12 fee from the, uh, from the county going to the city because, like where I live at, if I was going in a taxi, I could pay $13 and ride in luxury. I don't oppose the increase of the ticket because there's other cities that the ticket is, is $3, okay? Things does go up. I also oppose of, uh, the idea of that you, that care passengers can ride the city bus, which in Henrico, the bus stops at 7:00, and it's not on the weekends. And also where I live at in Henrico County, to cross the street where I live at in Western Henrico is very safe to hazard. And a lot of people have got killed in Henrico County crossing that street, there's handicap. And I'm very serious what I'm saying. But I don't want the service to stop at 8:00. I, I think it should keep going until we used to have until 11:00 at night because there's things that, personal things that I do that I use for work, I use for medical, and other things. And also, it's unfair to other people that have jobs. They don't get off at 8:00. And I use anywhere from six to seven books of tickets a week. And if I use six to seven books of tickets a week, estimated $400 and something a month, why would you want, uh, your heavy riders to decrease buying books of tickets a week? And do otherwise? And that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Rolanda Burns. I'm a retired disabled vet, and I agree with all the gentlemen said. One thing, the scheduling is horrible. They can schedule you to pick up three people on different sides of town, 8:00. I've had one person, a driver bypass my destination to pick up another person because they got to have that person at place at 8:00 meet, 8:00 another person, 8:00 they'll ride past where I got to be at just to get another person. And they can be, they can only wait for you for five minutes, but they can be an hour late picking you up. The scheduling, like that gentleman said, is all wrong. I live in Henrico County, but I had the same problem when I was living in the city. So I hate to see it go up too, but they got to, hopefully y'all rethink about what's going on. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for taking the time to come down and talk to us. Yes, sir.
Um, my name is John M. Hobisky. I use care because I have a brain injury. I would like to ask that you reconsider the fare, non-mandated ride. If you charge $12 a truck, that is two hours' work for only six hours. I only work for six hours. And that's almost half of my paycheck going to transportation. This change would make going to work not worth it. If I'm not working, I wouldn't be able to pay taxes anymore. And I try to remain a productive citizen, but you are making it very hard for me to do that. So in other words, I'd appreciate if y'all wouldn't raise the fare. I'll leave that up there for y'all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, I believe he left his notes up there so that we would get copies of them. Next speaker, please.
My name is Carol Gray, and I'm a resident of Henrico County. I'm here tonight, though, tonight because I'm concerned about the residents here in Richmond who are participants or residents here who are riding on the caravan. And I think that it is very important that we have an opportunity to use the service because I've been riding care for over 20 years. And before, what did people do that were, were disabled, that were not able to get around? And now with the increase in fare, would definitely be a hardship on people because they have to get to their jobs. And like you've heard before with people that have spoken, that it would be very difficult for them to continue their jobs and to do their extracurricular activities. And even me attending my church would be impossible to get, uh, out at 8:00 in most cases. So to, uh, cut their service off at that time would be really inconvenient for people. So if you could just consider, uh, what we are going through because we're disabled anyway, and it's just very difficult. So just take into consideration what we would like to have and to, you know, be able to have a good lifestyle and to continue on and doing like we're doing.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Cora Hayes. I reside in the city of Richmond in the 5th district, and I'd like to thank Parker for wearing your pink ribbon. Is that the one I gave you at the meeting? Thank you. I come here tonight to speak in, on the, uh, situation that the caravan has started. I'm a caravan rider. Uh, when you say $15 for a book of tickets, that's only 10. So if you got somewhere to go, you got five trips that you can ride on that $15 book. Uh, um, the, um, no, the $15 book is six tickets, and the $25 book is 10 tickets. I am concerned because most of the people, my folks that, that's riding the fair, caravan is on a set income. We are on social security. So I'm looking at, by the time you get your little social security check and you pay rent, buy groceries, then you got to start robbing Peter and paying Paul to get medicine. So what I am saying is this. Caravan can improve their services if they would only try. I had a neighbor of mine who waited for the caravan to pick him up from dialysis from 6:00 that night until 11:00 that night. That's unacceptable. If they want to decrease these services in the areas that they're going into, they're going to have to come up with something else to compensate for that decreasing of services. I am a breast cancer survivor. I go out into the counties of, of, uh, Henrico for some of my treatments. I go out to the county of Henrico for my, my back, for my spine, for my treatments for that. So if they cut that off, how am I going? How am I going to get there? How am I going to get back? And then a lot of these people that are riding the caravan, it's an insurance thing also. Uh, insurance don't allow you to go to this certain doctor in the city, but you have to go to the one in the county. So it's a lot of things that has to be considered before a final vote is, um, taken and is passed. And I hope that you all take all of this in consideration, and I hope you all live long enough and be healthy so you won't have to ride the caravan.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Crystal Harris, and I live in Henrico County, and I work in the city of Richmond. I, I have had my job for 27 years, and I've been working since I was 16. When I was 16 years old, I worked at Consolidated Bank and Trust Company. I went to school part-time and worked at that bank, and I rode the city bus from the south side of Richmond to downtown of Richmond when I was able and when I could. I am no longer able to do that. I am now wheelchair-bound, not by my choice or anyone else's choice. God has just put me on a different route. And God has allowed me from being in this wheelchair to try to be an advocate for everyone else. And as you look in the back of this room, this room is fuller tonight than it's been since this whole entire meeting, and I'm glad to see everyone out here. And I would just ask that you all would consider that this service needs to continue. I work in the city, as I said. I live in Henrico County, and I go to church in the city of Richmond. You all have notes because everybody that I deal with has sent you letters, so you've seen that. You know exactly that what I'm telling you is accurate. And I'm going to continue to fight for myself and for these people in this room to see that we get the things that we need because somebody has to stand up for them, with them, and by them. And I am a citizen, and I will continue to do my job as long as I have the breath to do that, regardless of my disability. Because my disability, believe it or not, has made me a stronger individual because I have compassion for each and every individual out here in this world. It doesn't matter what, what, what they look like, where they live, where they work, what they do. They're an individual that's in distress and needs help, and I, it's my job to try to do that. So I thank you all, and I hope you all would consider the situation that we're all in. And thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much for coming down.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Hello. I'm a resident of the Fulton District in Henrico. My name is Raymond McCray. The problematic non-beneficial increase of costs of specialized transportation fees are not acceptable. Perhaps if city council will resort to assessment accuracy within the positive potential of, as opposed to stress-related reasoning, it would force the self-esteem among the population, perhaps revealing a positive, a potential budget. Justifying the need for increasing the special, specialized services would diminish thanks among the aged and also the disenfranchised. Those who benefit from this service have little to no resources. This is not good judgment. I question this option and logic. It has been proposed to allow care riders to free rides on GRTC. It defeats the purpose since most participants of the service can't utilize GRTC. Please help us to help ourselves. If possible, please refer back to your original ledger for budgeting. I'm sure there are reallocations that could remediate the situation for all concerned. Your availability to prove yourself resourceful really prevails. Respectfully submitted, Raymond McCray.
Thank you very much, sir. And we'll be sure that every council member gets a copy of your notes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Montgomery.
Brian Montgomery, Henrico County. I just want to ask that y'all reconsider the options that's on the table. I'm glad we have the weekend, but for those of us on a fixed income, the $12 fee to get from Henrico to air functions that we take care of every week would be $12 on the weekends and at nights. So, you know, that's, if somebody only gets $700 a month, that's going to take a heck of a pinch out of their budget. And every function that we have to, to contribute to society, we're not going to be able to do it because of the cost. So just please reconsider. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
I'm reading this message for Nancy Wright Beasley, who writes, "I will be out of town on October 14th, and I've asked Inga Horowitz to read this message." Mrs. Beasley, Miss, Mrs. Beasley lives in Chesterfield. "I was first made aware of the difficulty that disabled individuals encounter as it pertains to transportation in Richmond when I wrote a column for Richmond Magazine in 2010 about Crystal and Randy Harris, both of whom have cerebral palsy, are confined to wheelchairs, and must depend on caravan services. Incidentally, you just heard from Crystal, there are two of them in that household. A round trip for them is $24 if this goes through." Ms. Beasley continues, "I heard the same stories again when I wrote another column in 2013 highlighting the Dreamers Theater, a group of wonderful young adults with a variety of physical and/or mental challenges. I was inspired by their courage and dismayed by the stories they told of being left stranded for hours by the current care van service or having the van show up on a different day from the one that was ordered. As I've stated previously to council, to consider a doubling of the fees for Henrico residents while cutting back on service hours will create insurmountable problems for my friends as they already face true hurdles with the existing service and in their lives. I would ask council members to consider two things as they decide the outcome and consequences of these changes. One, please look on these individuals as if they were your children and then act accordingly. And two, please consider this quote from John F. Kennedy, 'To those whom much is given...'" 'To those whom much is given, much is expected.'"
Thank you, Ms. Horowitz. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Phyllida Wheeler. I am a Henrico resident. And I wish to take this opportunity for its most displeasure over how GRTC deserves respects and is not in tune with the physically challenged community that they are supposed to be serving. While I do understand the gas prices are rising and everybody is hurting in the pocketbook, it is not fair to make us pay an extra three dollars for a non-mandated trip. This is unacceptable to me. I feel like GRTC policies do not fully regard or understand a physically challenged individual striving to lead a corporate normal life. It is irresponsible to take away the right of transportation by raising rates and limiting services. I am thoroughly dissatisfied with this. And I, and I am asking GRTC and City Council to stand in my wheelchair for one day, one hour, or even one minute. This rate increase is unfair and unjust. Please reconsider this action, which will cause the physically challenged communities to be thrown under the bus laterally. Please reconsider this action before it is too late. You are not taking into account the community yourself."
Thank you very much. And we'll be sure members of council get a copy of the written statement as well. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I would like to start off by saying that I think that the estimated six dollars for one fare is way too much. The reason that I think it is too much is because when you think of the previous $2.05 fare and factor in the proposed six-dollar fare, I would think that you might be able to see my point. This will negatively affect people who are on fixed incomes. Non-mandated rides and request services should be extended until 10:00 PM or 12:00 midnight. I think about all of the people who may have to be out later than the proposed return time. What are they supposed to do? What about the people who have a hard time walking to their destination from a fixed bus, from a fixed bus route? From a fixed route bus stop? You're giving them the option to ride the bus free when in actuality they can't even do this. Some of the care customers will not be able to afford to get where they need to go. And this is, and that is despicable. The city of Richmond should care more about their disabled and elderly. After all, they are some of the people who need the most help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Angela Fries. I am a resident of Henrico County and I have been using care for over 12 years. Here's a more, a more. I am here tonight because, because of the fact that you are raising the care to six dollars. I think it's totally unfair to me, to my coworkers who ride with me to work every day, which we use the caravan for, as well as other activities. And if you do that, that would definitely hurt everybody's pocketbooks. Please, I ask and pray that you please reconsider this decision. God bless you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Hicks. I'm here tonight because I'm totally against the increased fare and the cut, and the cut of transportation. I feel like it is wrong. I've been coming to the meetings after, but the first, so either the soccer meeting, Mr. Coles was on TV bragging about his new fleet of buses. And I just feel like we're supposed to pay for that. I can understand they need new buses, but hey, I'm in a wheelchair. A whole lot of these people, they cannot get around, but yet they brag about what they want. But yet they want to hurt us. We are small people. So I hope you find in your heart to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kate.
My name is Shirley Harris, Jr. I'm living in Henrico County. My nickname is Randy. You heard from my wife a few minutes ago, Crystal. And I just want to say, I hope you consider keeping the hours like they are or either giving us a couple more hours because we need, me and my wife live by ourselves and that's, we depend on care to, you know, do everything that we do. And like my wife, a couple of weeks ago was in the hospital and I use care to go back and forth. And if you cut the hours, if somebody's in the hospital, a family member, a friend, you can't, you won't be able to get there after eight o'clock. So I'd hope you will consider extending, at least giving us a couple more hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Glenna Craig. I have been a resident of Richmond, Virginia for 28 years. I have worked two jobs for a total of 28 years. And I understand that the fee for care has to go up, but also consider the elderly and the people that are on dialysis. That's what all they have to get around if they don't have family members. I don't have family here in the Richmond area or Virginia. I live on my own and I am so grateful to have the transportation that we have so that I can get to my jobs and to my doctor's appointments and to do what I need to do to daily function as everyone in this building that may drive or take a taxi cab. I have also checked into other companies for transportation. Some companies want $35 a day. Some want $59 a day round trip just for me to go to my job. And yes, the people that run GRTC want us to take the bus to ride for free. Well, the one thing they have to change, their drivers have to learn how to operate the lift. I've been on a bus twice where they didn't know how to operate the lift because it wouldn't work. And then they couldn't use the manual stick to operate it. So I had to wait for another bus, which made me late for work. Thank you for the city of Richmond for listening to everything that we have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You have a microphone right up here.
Oh, okay. My name is Doris Bowers and I live in the city of Richmond and I am a dialysis patient. And on behalf of other dialysis patients, one of the days that I go is on the weekends, on Saturday. And now they tell us that for Thanksgiving, we'll have to come on a Sunday. And I'm hoping that you won't cut out the service on the weekends. Plus, if you have to go up on the caravan tickets, consider adding two more tickets to each pack, to the fifteen-dollar ones and to the twenty-five-dollar ones. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
I am reading a little bit from Billy Austin, who's unable to come down here. He's sitting back there in the orange and yellow vest jacket. Billy Austin had a heat stroke at the age of 17. He went through Meadowbrook High School and he uses a communication device, which you must read to communicate. He rolled himself. He lives at the Virginia Home near Maymont Park. And using his electric wheelchair, he came here on the streets and the sidewalks. And he'll be going home the same way because he didn't ask for caravan, he said, because he didn't know how long the meeting would last. Incidentally, it's now 7:25. And if there were no caravan service after eight, these people who depend on the caravan couldn't get home. So just think about that. Eight o'clock is too early to close shop for them. Anyway, he wanted me to say a few words for him.
Ma'am, you've only got a minute and 20 seconds left.
Pardon?
Are you going to read something of his?
No, it's too long.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Austin, thank you for writing. We all have a copy of what you writ, uh, what you wrote up here. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Timothy Smalls. First, just disclaimer, I am a resident of the city of Richmond, the fourth councilmanic district. I also attend worship services in the city of Richmond, but I'm here because this is the right thing to do. When this august body started accepting federal, state, and local fronts to create GRTC 40 years ago this year, were your predecessors in the chamber thinking ahead to the time when their successors would be limiting the very services they were buying for the city of Richmond? In 1997, when caravan service began, were they thinking they could just provide equal service and equal job opportunities to those with full mobility? Mr. President, did they think that a wheelchair defines the person and the capacity to be a taxpaying, contributing member of society who votes? Mr. President, in 2004, when you approved the senior disabled discount rate for riders, did you think that you were, that they were in the back of their minds thinking, "We better milk this while we can because in nine years, we're going to pay more for a ride than fully able-bodied citizens"? Mr. President, what about five years ago when the American Public Transportation Association named GRTC the best transit system in North America? Was the APTA aware that in five short years, the system they were bestowing that honor upon would, in five short years, Mr. President, start pulling the rug from under those who could least afford to be left out in the cold? I want to read this statement to you, Mr. President. "GRTC Transit System seeks to become the leading provider of world-class transportation systems, excuse me, transportation services and mobility solutions." Their mission statement, Mr. President, "GRTC system's mission is to provide clean, safe, and reliable transportation and to improve mobility and access throughout central Virginia." And their core values, Mr. President, in conclusion, "absolute integrity, competence, and diligence in the performance of their duties and commitment to providing exceptional customer service, and most importantly, responsiveness to the needs of the communities we serve." Mr. President, my question, since I have to address you and has to be in a formal question, would you all sleep with a clear conscience tonight if this is passed? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Are there others in the audience that wish to speak in opposition?
Hello. My name is Chris Dorsey. I'm speaking in opposition to cutting services and raising rates for the caravan services. I think that it should be unlawful to cut services and at the same time raise rates. Unfortunately, that seems to be the only thing the government is doing at this time. I can't really add anything to the picture because the picture speaks a thousand words. The picture of an empty refrigerator. I would like to ask the question to whoever, "Do you have an empty refrigerator?" I'm not so sure. The hour is getting late. It's 7:30. Again, these meetings last into 9:00, 10:00 PM at night. Through the proposal that you all are putting forward, the people using the caravan would not be able to stay to possibly hear the judgment on their own transportation fate. But most importantly, as always, we have to, we have to discuss what the law is. And the law is the U.S. Constitution. And the Fourteenth Amendment says that there's equal protection under the law. And I think that if certain citizens in the United States and particularly GRTC and Richmond residents are not allowed the same transportation services as others, that that is a violation of the law. If it's not, it should be, but it seems pretty clear. So in closing, I don't, I don't want to live in a society where we give multi-billion-dollar corporations like the Washington Redskins millions of taxpayer dollars and we leave people who cannot get out and drive themselves around due to financial and physical restraints, no services, while raising their rates. I think it's really despicable and I urge you all to fund this service fully and improve the service that is already subpar. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, this is, my name is James Fox. I live in Henrico County and I have a person that has cerebral palsy. Her name is Kathleen Marie Moore. She's been a non-Hodgkin's cancer survivor for five years. And it would hurt me as much as her because I ride the caravans and so does she. But if she can't get to her doctor's appointments or to anything that she needs to get to, but I needed to get back and forth because I work out at Jefferson Lakeside Country Club and I've been there almost five, I mean, five, three years. And that's just this way, the only way I can get back and forth. And she's the only way that she can get back to her, you know, wherever she needs to go, like to chip and ham or whatever. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
My name's Silver Personier. I keep my comments short. I'd like to speak in opposition to this proposed funding. I was deeply moved by the speakers here tonight. I want to thank them for coming down because they're doing the best that they can to change your mind. A lot of times, I feel like your decisions are already made even before the public A lot of times, I feel like your decisions are already made even before the public comments. That's not fair to the citizens. Citizens should be able to have meaningful input into the laws and funding of the budget in a way that is real. I, too, agree with Mr. Dorsey that this is despicable. We should take care of these people. What we do unto the least of us, we do unto everyone. You know, we should take care of one another. Mr. President, is the budget shortfall a million and a half dollars? Do you know?
Mr. Blouse?
Yes. $780,000.
$780,000, not even a million dollars. Yet we can give, what, $9 million, brand-new San Redskins? That's despicable to me. Please do what you can to fund this. It's less than a million dollars. You guys move around money all the time. I wouldn't be surprised if there's money in the existing budget that can be re-appropriated. You guys do this stuff all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Personier. Anyone else to speak in opposition?
All right.
I see one or two folks coming down.
Good evening, council. I'm speaking for my son, Thomas Barber, Jr. Thomas has been a member of the county of Henrico, and he's a graduate of the Project Search program, which he works with St. Mary's. And he goes to work, and he comes home, and he likes to do things on his own and be independent. I was a little nervous about him being independent when he first started to go out on his own and everything, but as I got more used to the caravan and Thomas got more used to it, he loves to go and does the things to be independent because what if I'm not here tomorrow? If I'm not here tomorrow, he needs to know how to get around and use the public transportation system and the caravan, and it helps him to motivate him to do things in a right way and a better way. And I'm not very good at public speaking, but I hope I pretty much got a point across for my son, Thomas.
Thank you very much. Sir, would you like to say anything?
You want to say anything, Tom? You good?
I'm good by now.
Your father did a good job.
Okay.
Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? This is the last call. All right. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak in favor or in support of this paper? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion. The patrons have an opportunity to go first if any of them would like to. Otherwise, I will -- actually, if you wouldn't mind, patrons, what I'd really like, in some of the public comments, there was a discussion about the $2.50 up to $6 trips to Henrico. Would one of or all of the patrons be willing to discuss the difference between -- or maybe we could have Mr. Hagan come up and discuss the difference between an ADA and a non-ADA trip, as well as the difference between Richmond and Henrico?
Larry Hagan with GRTC. So what I can do is, and I'm going to reference the frequently asked questions sheet that we've made available to everybody here, to those of you on council. We hope that this is a pretty good tool to try to explain the situation, and I regret that it has been somewhat confusing with the public, and we still see that tonight with the way folks are looking at it. We hope that this could do some work to try to make it a little simpler to understand. I do think I can kind of work my way through this, and hopefully this will help explain what's on the table for you tonight. At the heart of this is the difference between what we could call a basic care trip and an extended or optional care trip. There's been plenty of different terminology that we've used for that over the last several months, and I don't think it's probably helped a whole lot in terms of folks understanding it. For the purpose of me explaining it now, let's think of it in terms of care and care plus. The care ser -- both of which are right now being provided with our care van for the same price, $2.50. We do two types of trips. A care trip, we'll take an individual anywhere our fixed routes go, the days and the times that they do that, and that simply cannot change. What that means here is full coverage for the city of Richmond from 4:30 a.m. to 12:30 a.m., seven days a week. That's our care service. That can't change by federal law. It has to exist to match our fixed route service. No changes there. No changes are being proposed to that. So the care service would still be available 4:30 a.m. to 12:30 a.m., seven days a week throughout the entire city of Richmond. That service is not affected by this.
Let me stop you there. And if people in the audience can nod along with me, does everyone hear what Mr. Hagan has said? The care service in the city of Richmond is going to run from 4:30 in the morning until 12:30 the next morning, seven days a week. Does everybody hear that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
The only proposal that we have on the table for that basic care service is to raise the fare from $2.50 to $3, number one. And number two, to allow any qualified care rider to ride our fixed route service for free. Those are the only changes to the care service that we're proposing right now. Okay, let's talk about care plus first. Sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Trammell, everybody's done such a good job today of addressing the question to the president. If you would do the same, I'd appreciate it.
I'm sorry, what? I'm going to ask him to repeat what he just said. I did not hear exactly what he said.
Absolutely. Mr. Hagan, would you please repeat that?
Last line, about $2.50 to $3, and then what was the other part?
The only changes that we are suggesting right now before you all to the basic care service is, number one, increasing the fare from $2.50 to $3 each way, and, number two, allowing qualified care riders to ride fixed route service for free. Those are the two things that we have before you right now with the care service, the basic care service. So with that, let me talk for a minute about care plus, the other service right now that is happening on GRTC, caravans, that frankly, folks that ride the service don't even know the difference between the two. They pay $2.50 for either trip. So this whole issue has really brought out that there are two different types of trips that we do. A care plus trip would be a caravan going anywhere into Henrico County where the traditional big buses that we have don't run on days or hours or locations where they don't run. So what that means is, Henrico County, they don't run fixed route service on Saturday and Sunday. In Henrico County, there are no fixed routes that go to Short Pump Town Center. If a city of Richmond resident that uses care wants to go to Short Pump Town Center, that is a care plus trip. If a city of Richmond resident wanted to go to Short Pump Town Center, shops at White Oak Village on the weekend, that is a care plus trip. That's outside of the area of the city of Richmond proper where we provide our basic care service, and there are no fixed routes running on those locations or at those times. So that's considered a care plus trip. What we are suggesting, and this is based on looking at what other transit systems do, I mean, at the end of the day, I know that this is tough. This is tough on those of us at GRTC, too. These are the decisions that keep us awake at night as well because we have that unenviable position of having to balance our fixed route, traditional bus service and the care service, and move as many people as we can with the limited budget that we have. And sometimes it's hard, financial decisions like this that have to happen. So what we're saying for the care plus trips are basically two things. One, create a new fare for the care plus service that would be $6 each way. Two, we're suggesting a reduction in the service time for a care plus trip, not the basic care service, only a care plus trip by three hours. Right now, we run 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. We're saying 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to help bring down some of the cost. What we have as a challenge before us is increased demand, increased ridership for the care service that is challenging to meet because of the cost of providing those trips. It costs us, on average, about $30 to provide a one-way trip on care. The riders pay $2.50, and we think that's great, too. But we are just struggling financially to try to maintain that same level of service. We took a hard look at our service over the last several years as we have struggled with budget deficits. At GRTC, we have cut administrative staff by 20%. We have cut evening service on our fixed route transit lines. We still were running into budget deficits. As we took a harder and harder look at our operations, it became clear, from 2003 to 2013, our fixed route costs have increased, on average, by about 6%. Our care service has increased by 75%. So we took a really hard look at what other transit systems do, and we found that GRTC out of our peers, the folks that we compare ourselves to a lot, that we're the only system that provides care plus-type trips and doesn't charge more for it or doesn't make it be subject to capacity. So that's why, as hard as this is, that's why we thought it was important to bring it before this body and to make a decision so that we could be more sustainable into the future.
Mr. Hagan, thank you. Ms. Trammell, did you get your information?
I fully don't understand all of it. Why don't we just let everybody go into care, go into care service then? Let all of them, instead of you having the care plus, just tell everybody to come on the other one then, and then forget that. I mean, I know you've heard them cry from their hearts tonight, and to me, I am, my heart is broken to see this many citizens have to come down here and plead and cry their hearts out because who knows, someday we might be in the same predicament they're in.
Right. I fully understand.
I mean, this is just, I mean, I just, I just don't understand. You know, $780,000, we can't find it somehow?
Mr. Hagan, I believe what Ms. Trammell, Ms. Trammell, please correct me if I'm wrong. I think what she was asking is, if the caravan service goes from 4:30 to 12:30 the next morning, why can't everybody use that instead of the care plus? Is that's right? All right. So I think the answer probably involves something to do with what the ADA, the Americans with Disability Act, the federal law mandates.
Right. So this gets back to the foundation of this whole issue, which is the difference between what's required by the federal government for us to provide and what is optional. And in this case, what is optional is anything that we provide into Henrico County that's not where the fixed route buses run. And one of the issues that we have, and we think that this is why we see a similar trend in other systems in limiting that care plus-type service, is it is translating to increase cost for us and a more difficult time in meeting our budget because of the trips across Henrico County, they're more expensive, they're more miles, they're more hours. It's just costing us more, and we saw that when we looked at that 10-year trend of costs where we were around $15, $17 a trip, and then around 2008, when we really started to open up Henrico County more, that we started getting into the mid-20s and upper 30s. So it's times like this, we certainly have an unenviable job in suggesting a financial-based decision that's not popular, but our mission is to just try to be sustainable and provide transportation to as many people as we can.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Hagan? I see Ms. Graziano has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, there are a lot of people from Henrico here. Does this apply to me if I have a Henrico residence, or is this clearly just for Richmond city residents?
Okay, so what we did with our frequently asked questions, because we saw that as a trend over the last few months, that there's some confusion if you're a Henrico County resident, how this impacts you. The short answer is, it does not. This issue before city council right now is for qualified city of Richmond care riders. Now, does that mean Henrico County's not considering anything? No, they definitely are. They've built into their FY14 budget solid consideration of creating a $6 fare each way for the care plus-type trips. That's the only thing. They're not talking about any changes in service in Henrico County, only considering the $6 care plus fare. That's it. All these changes we're talking about tonight, these are city of Richmond changes and do not impact a resident of Henrico County.
And was that your only, okay. Vice President Robertson?
Thank you. Mr. President, thank you. The question I wanted to make clear, though, is that we did hear a lot from residents of Henrico. And my understanding is that Henrico County currently covers the full costs at the actual cost for the services that are provided for their residents that are using the caravan. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have a contract with transit within Henrico County. It's completely separate from the city of Richmond. They pay us for every care trip. What happens is that $2.50 fare, that's a credit to them, and then they make up the rest of that. So if it's a $30 trip, they're paying for two, or the fares covering $2.50, the rest of it, the Henrico County's paying for that, each individual one. And it's also important to remember that the way the service works is based on trip origin. If you're a Henrico County resident and you're traveling into the city, that trip is billed to Henrico County because it starts in Henrico County. If you're a city of Richmond resident and you're going out to Short Pump, that trip is billed to the city of Richmond because it starts in the city of Richmond. It's all about where you start your trip.
Can I do a follow-up question?
Yes, please.
Is our contract with Henrico also, I guess, the care plus, as you distinguish those four, as which I appreciate, that doesn't apply to Henrico? Is that correct?
It currently does not, but they are considering that, and we have included in what we've made available to everybody this evening. If you look on that back page, we've already worked up a graphic that would show the difference between care and care plus. I mean, if this has brought out anything, I think it's that everybody needs to understand there are two types of trips that we provide that all impact our costs. And if we had thought about this months ago and given them different names, I think there would have been less confusion up to this point. I regret that we couldn't think of it earlier, but we recently did. We came up with a graphic for that so you all could understand that. Right now, Henrico County residents pay $2.50, no matter where they're going, same as a city of Richmond care rider.
Mr. Aguilasto had his hand up. Ms. Trammell, I'm sorry. Mr. Aguilasto?
Thank you, Council President. I guess there are a couple of basics that we need to all understand, and that is the transit authority, federal transit authority, they put all these requirements on our public transportation, making it accessible. And there's the certificate of equivalent service. The proposals that we have today still meet all of the expectations for equivalent service. The other requirements that I believe we've not really fully addressed, but you've talked about the $30 cost and the $2.50 fare and going to $3. That is capped due to federal requirements about how much each fare could be increased in a given budget cycle, so.
You're absolutely correct, and the cap is double your fixed route fare. Right now, you pay $1.50 to ride a GRTC fixed route bus. That means the most by federal law that we could charge for a complimentary care service is $3.
So it seems like we've, GRTC's proposal has kind of maxed out what it could in terms of recovering revenues to meet its obligations. Looking through some of the federal requirements, it seems to me that there's a provision there for if there's an undue financial burden to the system, that it gives you some other options of getting yourself to a budget-neutral position, one of which is talking with private providers for the same service. Have we, has GRTC talked to private providers about making up some of the service-level issues that are being presented to us? Have we explored that option since that's something that the federal government, the guidelines have allowed for?
Okay, two things on that. Number one, federal planning regulations now dictate that an urban area, an urbanized area like Richmond area like Richmond, has in place a Coordinated Human Services Mobility Plan. That plan is supposed to fill in the gaps between what we provide, what a mom and pop provides, what Van Gogh provides. It brings us all together to figure out who's providing what, what are the gaps, and how do we fill them. That plan's been in place for a few years. We still really have a lot of those institutional separations between providers. It's just, I think, it's panned out to not be as easy of a thing to do in operation. Now, someone mentioned earlier new freedom funding. And new freedom funding, that was newly created under Safety Loop Federal Transportation Authorization Funding Bill, and it's only for new service, above and beyond what you're doing. It can't be for anything that you have in place on the street. And that funding actually is, under MAP 21, the newest federal transportation authorization legislation. I mean, that now is going to be administered by the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation. That funding will still be there, but sadly, it does not help our situation, because it has to be for service above and beyond. For example, if we wanted to go door-to-door instead of curb-to-curb, that's an expansion of what we do. You could qualify, try to go after the funding for that, but you can't get it to just pay for what you're doing right now, okay? So that's number one. Number two, we have been talking some internally and done some research into Logisticare and Medicaid-eligible individuals. You know, Logisticare is the state broker for Medicaid transportation, non-emergency Medicaid transportation. So what happens is, individuals that qualify for Medicaid, they can get trips through Logisticare, who uses a pool of private operators. And anybody that rides our service right now that's eligible for Medicaid could go through Logisticare, and they don't pay anything. It's a completely free trip. That's the most we've done up to this point. No big solution on the combination of private sector and us. We certainly do talk to them, but we haven't found a real good fit yet.
So it seems, and we heard a number of the speakers complain about service level and the reliability, so it seems that we need to have GRTC perhaps have more conversations with the private providers for logistics. And certainly, from an internal operations, it seems like there's significant concerns about the logistics, the operations of the current care service. And I don't know how you all plan to address that. I mean, that's not a funding issue, that is an operations issue. You've got the funding in place, so, you know, we could potentially approve all this, but that service level isn't necessarily going to get addressed. And I don't know what you all plan to do to resolve some of the complaints that we heard tonight. The one other component that I hear coming out is the cost of going to the Care Plus of the $6. And as far as the basic care, somebody on a Monday night like tonight, who begins their trip in the City of Richmond, can come down to city council, and they would still get the service up until 12:30 under the new plan?
Absolutely.
So 12:30, if you start it, or if you start in Richmond, and you're down here at City Hall at 12:30 on a Monday night, you can still get picked up with the basic care service?
That's correct. It has to match our fixed route service.
Okay, so there's not really any change there. However, if you start in Richmond and you plan to go to Henrico, you're subject to the Henrico hours of operation. So it seems to me, and then that's where we go into the Care Plus. So it seems to me, in order to reduce the fares for City of Richmond residents who choose to go out to Henrico, we would do better by encouraging Henrico to have expanded hours of operations, so that if they expand their hours of operations, then it all qualifies under the basic care, and you don't have to go into Care Plus. Is that correct?
Well, sure, you're absolutely right. Wherever there's fixed route service, if a jurisdiction comes to GRTC and they say, "We want a fixed route transit line to go here," we say, "Okay, we will be glad to work that cost up for you, but you also have to consider the care service that has to accompany it." So you're absolutely right. Wherever the fixed routes go, care has to be there as well. Here's the only exception to that, an express route that has a park-and-ride lot. That is exempt from the complimentary ADA service, because it's got basically two points that it's serving, a park-and-ride lot and then downtown. And to get to your question about operations, you know, the care-type service, it's very challenging to provide. And I've talked to other folks about this recently, and I'll tell you all the same thing I've told them. Call Van Gogh, who right now is providing the service for Chesterfield. Access Chesterfield's the name of that service. Call the folks in Chesterfield that are dealing with that. You could call down to Hampton Roads Transit, Northern Virginia, wherever they run that service. There are many, many, many complaints for the service, because it tries to do a tough thing. It's a shared ride service, not individual taxi service, and I think a lot of people forget that. And we try to keep folks on that vehicle for as short a period of time as we can, you know, 90 minutes or less. And I know sometimes it goes over that, but we try to not have that happen. That's why you might have several different vans picking folks up. Depends on where they're going, and can you put them all on a van and not have them be on there a very, very long time? And it's a challenging thing to do. I'm not trying to make excuses, but I'm just telling you that, no matter who you talk to, you are going to hear about the challenges of providing that service. We do the best we can, we try as best we can to get as many people on the vans and be as efficient as we can, but there are these other requirements as well.
So I'm going to end my line of questioning with this last thought, and that is, perhaps it would be productive for GRTC to present to Richmond City Council a plan that shows advocacy to Chesterfield and Henrico to expand service in their regions. You know, clearly, when we look at your maps, the full City of Richmond has good coverage. The full City of Richmond qualifies for basic care service. It's outside of the city's footprint that our residents are having to spend extra for the Care Plus service. So what it would be helpful, if we approve this, that there's some plan in motion to advocate for expanded routes in the counties, so that they, too, become part of the basic care and not the Care Plus geographic region. And I personally would like to see that. The last thing, and Mr. Hagan, thank you for your responses, the last thing, I do have a question for the city attorney, and that is, on 2B, it says that there's a requirement for the city to contribute $340,000 to GRTC to augment the budget and the plan, and, you know, we don't, the paper that we're going to vote on doesn't have a budget component to it, but the proposal does. So what I'd like to know is, if we adopt a paper that has a budgetary component, what impact does that have? Does GRTC then potentially run at a loss? Does the administration, does that compel them to come back and ask for the budget amendment?
The administration would not be required to come back with a proposed budget amendment. If there is no budget amendment, then GRTC would operate at a loss. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
If I may, could I add something to that? I mean, one of the things that we have said recently, and it really does still hold true, new state operating dollars coming to all the transit systems, that looks even more so like it's going to happen now. The Commonwealth Transportation Board is, they're voting on it this Thursday. We won't know till they're done voting on it, but it looks pretty good for GRTC and other systems. We're proposing that we use some of those dollars to fill our budget hole this fiscal year, so there really wouldn't be that 340 there, if that gets at your question.
Ms. Trammell?
Thank you. Madam Vice President, I need to ask you a question. Can the estimated $6 million to $12 million surplus from FY 2013 be used to cover the GRTC shortfall?
The, for the state?
Estimated $6 million to $12 million surplus from FY 2013 be used to cover the shortfall?
For city funds. The administration would have to answer that question. Mr. Marshall, the question is, from Ms. Trammell, is that there is an anticipated surplus of $6 to $12 million, and whether or not those funds are available? That's the question.
Byron Marshall, Chief Administrative Officer. I'm not aware of any $12 million surplus, or even a $6 million surplus. What year are we talking about?
FY 2013.
No, ma'am, I think we said somewhere maybe closer to 4, and that really depends upon what happens with the audit, because we may, once the audit is completed, we may find that we will lose some of those dollars.
But, Mr. Marshall, you just said it might be 4 million, then? Okay.
Prior to the audit.
I'm sorry, what?
Prior to the audit. We don't know what the audit results are going to be. It could be that we have some things that will be booked against that money, and that will reduce the surplus to zero. I don't know. That's why when we gave you the report, we said, "There's a big contingency here, a big question. We don't know exactly what the result is going to be."
All right, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Dr. Newbill? I'm sorry, Ms. Trammell, did you finish?
No, that's okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, Dr. Newbill?
I just had a question. Did you have a question, too?
I'm sorry, I thought I saw your hand, Dr. Newbill. Oh, okay.
I just was wondering.
Ms. Graziano?
Thank you. Madam Vice President, I was just wondering, if some action is not taken, does that, would that have any impact on the regular service?
Here's the big challenge in all of this. Here's the true big picture behind this issue. 75% increase in costs for the last 10 years for the care service. If you assume that that trend continues on, you know, we certainly would have a part of this whole situation, hey, if you can afford more, great. If not, some other changes have to happen structurally, because the service demand is continuing and the costs are continuing to go up. So that would mean, every fiscal year, we're going to be right back here asking for more funding, because our budget is going to be out of whack because of the increased costs associated, in a lot of ways, with struggling to provide the care service. For example, July, August, and September of this fiscal year, we are 10% higher in ridership than we were last year. Here's what this means financially. I mean, it costs us $30 for each trip. We're getting $2.50 in fare. Increased demand, in this case, really translates to a lot of increased cost. So that's what we're struggling with. This scene here, it's playing out with transit systems across the country right now, as they struggle with providing this service and dealing with the incredible demand for it. More money has to be put toward it, or you have to try to do what you can structurally to set it up so that it's sustainable, year after year after year. That's the big challenge here. And if you can't throw more funding at it, and if you don't want to make any changes to care, then you have to, where else do we have to look? Our fixed route service and cutting that back, and our staff and cutting that back. And those are things that we have done in the last five years, both, actually.
Mr. Robertson?
I think I'm next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice, I'm sorry, when I got back down, she said she had a question. I didn't see her hand.
Okay, if it's a question.
Go ahead, Dr. Newbill.
We do want to make a motion.
Oh, then Vice President Robertson.
Okay.
The last.
All right. The question that I have, that I want just to be clear about, is, going back to your description as it relates to Care versus Care Plus, are we, are there other sources of revenue that's helping to supplement the difference in the costs of the $30 charge for the care services? Not the Care Plus?
Right, so this is all GRTC has available in terms of operating budget contributing toward those costs. We get a little bit of federal dollars for it, because it is a federal requirement, but it is a pittance compared to the amount that it costs to provide it in our budget. So that's one fund source. The local governments are another, and then, of course, state operating funds based on our budget. Those are the three sources that we have right now.
Yeah, just like to do a follow-up. Are we seeing a significant increase in the costs associated with Care Plus?
We are seeing an increase in the cost to provide care overall because of the Care Plus trips in part, because they're longer, more hours, more miles. It's just costing us more to provide them as demand increase more and more over time, more trips, more miles, more hours, more costs. That's why, when you look at that 10-year trend from 2003 to 2013, in 2008, the cost makes a jump from around $15, $17 into the 20s, and it just goes up from there. And that's because in 2008, we expanded our Care Plus footprint. So we were providing it longer, on the weekends, after 8:00, basically, is what happened in 2008, and it's that with demand. So overall, the care service is costing more. I mean, we are charged $30 per trip, whether it's a Care or a Care Plus trip. They're all the same right now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Hilbert?
Yes.
Vice President, I just mean, Dr. Newbill, is yours a question or a motion?
It really isn't a question, it's a motion. I guess I'm not, I'll wait till the end of questions.
I'm happy to hear the motion. Would you mind if Mr. Hilbert had his question answered first?
Absolutely. I'll defer to my colleague.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Thank you, Mr. President. The, as to who pays for what trip, do we have statistics on the number of trips that originate in the city that go to the county and vice versa?
Hold on one second. We do, let me just see if I know the numbers for sure.
What I'm having concerns about is that someone that originates a trip in the city that goes to, as the example that you gave, Short Pump Town Center, and comes back, that's on the City of Richmond. I'm assuming, and this may be a bad assumption on my part, that someone is possibly shopping. I don't know that we make a difference as far as, or have statistics on, whether someone's going to a job or not. But we're, let me just, okay, so this is $6 for the, under this proposal, for someone to go to Short Pump one way. Okay. But what if that same person went to Stony Point that is located in the city? They were shopping at Walmart in Short Pump. Could they go to the Walmart on Forest Hill? And if so, what would that cost be?
They absolutely can, and that cost right now would be $2.50, and under this proposal, the new cost would be $3 each way, the base care fare. That's within the city proper, that's the basic care service.
I guess I'm having some real concerns about subsidizing someone to go to Short Pump to shop. That's a real problem for me, when the city is paying for that, for someone to patronize a county business. And I don't mean to sound like that this is a zero-sum game, but the fact is that our surrounding jurisdictions have made it that way. And I don't know what the counties are paying out of their operating budgets each year, but I got a feeling it's south of $11 million that the City of Richmond pays. And so, you know, I hate that we're having this discussion, but the fact is that if we had a regional transportation authority that could do this, we wouldn't be talking about who pays what. We'd all be jumping in this as a region together, as opposed to the city picking up all the expense of this, or a vast majority of it. We'd be happy to pick up the $27.50, the difference of that, for the few people that would use it relatively in the county, and we appreciate them picking that up. But the fact is that they don't spend what the City of Richmond does. And I was very moved by the people that came here this evening. It is, these folks are in a real predicament. It is, these folks are in a real predicament and I, and I don't think you could be a human being without being moved by what these individuals did. So I, I thank them so much for coming down. I do want to see, sir, I heard the administration, Mr. Marshall, say something about it, that GRTC, if we pass this, would be stuck with the cost until such times as a budget amendment came forward. It would seem to be, I'm, I'm a little concerned about putting something in motion and then hoping that a budget amendment comes around for the sake of GRTC. And now, some could say, well, that's not, you know, let them figure it out. I'm trying to, to appreciate that the vast majority of the people that use this system live in the city of Richmond. So I hope everyone will take this in mind. We've had a proposal out right now by a good delegate who asked us to jump in this together as a region, the only delegate that represents Richmond, Henrico, and Chesterfield. And I appreciate Delegate La Passey and his leadership on this. But the fact is to me that the bus system has to be part of this proposal. And you can't purport to be a Richmond Transportation Authority or Metropolitan Transportation Authority and not include mass transit in that proposal. You can't skim off the top of a toll system that kicks off $8 million in its last fiscal year and expect the city to pay 11 million plus out of our operating budget and everybody, you know, want their tolls lowered every year. I hope that this can be part of this discussion. And I really appreciate folks coming down here this evening. But do we, and I'm sorry, I did ask a question there earlier about, do we have a differentiation between those that are riding to employment and those that are riding for, for lack of a better word, commerce?
We don't have, we don't have that information. What I can tell you is as far as the ridership, as far as for Richmond, it's 80% that is considered the care type and the 20% for the care plus.
Do we have a statistics on how many trips originate in the city on care plus versus those that originate in the county?
I'm not sure we're 100% following you.
Well, if you've got a care plus trip that originates in the city, then the city picks that up. If it originates in Henrico, they pick that up. What I'm saying is, do we have the folks that are outgoing to the county? Do we have a, a number on that versus those that are incoming to the city?
As far as Henrico ridership, if the, their ADA service is about 40% versus 60% non-ADA, which is the care plus.
Okay, but as an overall aggregate, I guess what I'm saying is, I hear what you're saying of each jurisdiction, what their 80, 20, 60, 40. What I'm saying is of all the trips that are care plus, how many of them originate in the city? And you may not have this information.
Yeah.
And how many originate in the county? Because you'd, you'd have to know that in the extent that you're getting, since Henrico's paying for it all, I think there's a number out there. It just may not be readily available.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure with the way we track our information, that's something we could get, I think we just don't know it's standing here.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm sorry here that I didn't throw that out earlier. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Now, Doc.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it was, I think what I'm trying to find, I know that we used a word or someone used a word, going shopping to Henrico County from the city, but I, from where I've heard most of them, they were talking about doctor's appointments, taking their loved ones to the hospital where Richmond may, may not have their doctors here, and also getting to the jobs. Do we have a, a number of how many per se that have, you know, like loved ones are totally dependent upon each other to take each other on the caravan to go to a doctor to help them? Maybe that doctor's not in Henrico, like one of my doctor is not in him, in the city, but I have to go to Henrico.
You're asking a great question and that question's been asked several times by elected officials, not only here, other jurisdictions as well. At GRTC, like other transit systems, we can't ask or track where those individuals go, what type of trip that they are taking, because every trip is looked at with the same level of importance in terms of being fully integrated with society. So we, we, we just don't know that information. We have a massive database with address start, address end, but we can't take the address end and correlate that, you know, to specific employment, to shopping. I mean, I suppose you could really do the mining and try to figure that out, but we don't ask that when they schedule their trip. We're not supposed to do that. Yeah, it's federal law. I mean, we, we just, we can't do that. So I wish I could answer that for you because I know it's important, but we, we don't have that information.
Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to simply say thank you to all of those who came before this body this evening to share with us their comments and experiences, life experiences. These are individuals living with medical, physical, and cognitive challenges who are among our city's most vulnerable population, but yet clearly among our most valuable citizen population. As such, I would like to make a motion such that this paper would be continued and we would ask GRTC to go back to the table along with the administration to come back with less impactful Richmond's transit options, especially in light of the state funding that is going to be deliberated on Thursday of this week so that we can really see if we can have an opportunity to do better by this citizen population in our community. And that would be my motion.
Okay. A motion's been made by Dr. Newbill to continue to the next meeting of City Council. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Trammell. Now, discussion by, yeah, discussion by council members. Vice President Robertson?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with Dr. Newbill as it relates to, this is a really, really challenging situation. I mean, you know, we really, I mean, transportation and accessibility to transportation is, is a critical service for, for us all. The state funding, can you tell us more about that funding? Is that a one-time funding? Is this a continued source of funding that we know that we're going to be expected to receive, that will be coming to greater Richmond Transit and can be used for this service?
Okay, so the, the funding right now, it looks to be $2,960,000 that will be coming to GRTC. Like other transit systems, we're assuming at this point to be conservative and not to assume that that same number will repeat itself every fiscal year from this point forward. The intent of the state legislation is to create a new state operating stream that will continue. But there are a lot of moving pieces and puzzles to this issue. We think it's prudent, at least with this first, and maybe the second allocation of it, maybe even the third, to, to be slow with this and to make sure that it looks like it's going to be a solid, sustainable, level source of funding. So as a result, what we're saying right now is that we treat this first allocation as one-time funding. If you go and put this into new operations and the funding ended up being less the next year and you got to pull them back, you're in a bad spot. And other transit systems are struggling with that too. So we're proposing that you look at it as one-time funding. And here are the uses that we think are appropriate for that. Number one, GRTC has a, a contingency fund, like other big companies. It's 15% is what the goal is. Right now, we're at 7%. We really need to add more funding to that contingency fund. So we are proposing one use for that money to go to the contingency fund. The second use, we struggle, like other transit systems, with replacing our buses. They're our most valuable asset. As they hit 12 years old, they really become problematic from a maintenance standpoint and you have to try to get new buses if you can afford it. Right now, if you assume our funding stream going forward, we've got about 50 buses that we just, and this is getting close to half our fleet, that it looks like if continued funding stays level, it could take us 10 years to replace those buses. That, that's going to be a real maintenance problem for GRTC. So we're saying some of that funding should go toward trying to get a couple of new buses. It's not going to solve the problem, but every little bit helps with that. The next thing, Henrico County, Chesterfield County have transit contracts with GRTC that have a state revenue credit associated with them that allows us, if we do get state, extra state operating funds, that their state revenue credit should increase as well. And that is a, a part of this too. And finally, we have been trying in earnest for the last three years to change all the signage in our system to make it better for customers so that it's not just, hey, GRTC bus stop sign, don't park here. We actually have the routes where the bus stop signs are, all 2,100 of our bus stop signs, pretty expensive project. We, we think that some of this funding should go to that as well. So there are, you know, there's several priorities for it and just plowing all of the funding into one thing, and particularly if it's operating, we're just not recommending that at this point because we need more years of this to see what it'll be and see how consistent it will be and reliable before we can start relying on it to pay for valuable things like operations costs. And, well, I guess I didn't mention the last thing, which is pretty important for this discussion, which is filling the budget hole for this fiscal year. So we, we could fill the budget hole for this fiscal year, but what we have been saying all along is you are just kicking the can down the road at that point. Whether you, you know, have this go out another month or two or another year, you're looking at significantly increased costs over time that probably will replicate themselves into the future and demonstrated increased ridership for that service. It's just our recommendation as a transit provider to put something before you that we think is more sustainable so we don't have to keep coming back here. You could put more funding toward it, but you're going to have to do it every year because the costs are going to go up every year because the ridership's going to go up every year. That's why we're bringing this tough decision before you. And while we regret that, but that's just what has to happen.
Vice, I'm sorry. You had made a motion, vice, and it was seconded. We went to discussion, Vice President Robertson had a question. So technically, she still has the floor if she has any other questions.
Thank you. My question is, for the $2.9 million that we're looking at, to close your budget gap for the year, if I'm understanding you correctly as it relates to the care services, both the mandated and the care plus services, you are currently looking at, out of that 2.9, roughly a little bit less than $400,000 to close this budget year out of those funds. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, go ahead.
That's correct, assuming that the City Council approves the.
That's also assuming that we increase the rate and we increase the fee for the care plus services.
That's correct.
Okay, so the absence of the increase for the care plus and the rate maybe, you're actually looking at this year's shortfall projected close to $800,000.
You are correct.
Okay, so is it possible, I mean, I hear what you're saying as it relates to the continuation of providing the care plus services, that it is going to be an ongoing budget issue? Is consistently growing in demand for services for the care plus services? We will always be obligated to carry the, just the mandated care services. So is it realistic that within, for this one year, to the end of, for this year, that we close the gap with the 708 and make notice now that the care plus services will be discontinued or continued at this $6 rate effective July 1st? I mean, considering the contingency, which is at 7%, that has probably been there for several years, the fact that we are going to buy two buses versus, and the fact that the, the revenue credit or the signage, that we may not do all of the signage, can we, if, I mean, it's going to be important if that decision is made that we would have to make a definitive decision as to what we're doing come, effective July 1st. I guess the question I'm asking you, is it possible with the 2.9, considering we received that, that we, we close the gap for this FY year with a budget strategy for the upcoming years?
Right, that, you know, that seems reasonable, certainly, that you use this state funding this fiscal year, but then starting July 1 of next fiscal year, July 1, 2014, that this package goes into effect.
Okay. So I would like to offer a counter motion that we amend, I don't know whether we require amendment, but to continue this paper or amend this paper to carry us, use the anticipated revenue and cover this year with a definite statement as to what we're going to do with the care at the time when we adopt this, this resolution or ordinance.
Vice President Robertson, you've made me pull out my Roberts rules.
Take your motion on the floor.
There's a motion seconded and we're in discussion on that. Are you making a motion to amend Dr. Newbill's motion? Or are you saying that once we vote on hers, if it doesn't pass, you would like to make a motion?
If Dr. Newbill, if we can amend Dr. Newbill's motion and she supports that, that's fine.
Okay, but I want to be absolutely clear in terms of what I'm asking. I'm asking GRTC and the administration to go back to the table. I'm asking you to take a look at not only the state dollars, Medicaid and anything else. I'm not asking for a one-shot kind of deal. I'm talking about sustainability and to come back with a viable plan and options to attach. And I do hear, I, I do hear the cost, but I also hear the folks who were before us and contrary to, we're going to have more aging medical, that's not going to become less. And so we're going to have to figure this out because that's a viable part of our, of our population. And so I am asking that they, I, I'm not sure I'm asking, I'm not asking for one year. I'm asking to go back and come back with options that includes minimally one year, but how are we going to go forward as well, looking at all sources, whether they are city and/or state and/or Medicaid? As you said, Medicaid, people can ride for free. I, I know that for any number. So how do we build that in and what are the other opportunities so we can make that information available as a part of a package to our citizens, you know, to address this? So I'm not sure if it's quite the same. I'm not trying to, how do we talk about long-term sustainability here, which includes minimally maybe one year, but I'm not wanting to limit it to that. I really do want us to figure this out.
It would appear.
Can I get a clarification?
You may.
Okay, so Dr. Newbill, just for clarification, and I agree, I think that this is not, this is not a one-year problem. This is something that's going to be ongoing. Am I understanding you to say that you support the, you can support an amendment to use the 2.9 to cover the, over the cost through July, June 30 for this year? But in addition to that, your motion is to ask for a sustainability plan?
Right, so beyond July 1, it's not, oh, okay, here are the rates that I am looking for viable options for our citizens who came before us this evening. And I'm sorry to be looking at you, but your, if the administration was there, I'd be looking at them too. To look at viable options that do include state, Medicaid, and any others that would make this less impactful for our citizens. And this would be sustained over the long term.
All right, Vice President Robertson, Dr. Newbill?
And my amendment to her motion is only that I am asking if she would accept a friendly amendment that we will continue the same services through this FY year and that out of the 2.9 appropriation that we are anticipating received from the state, the $800,000 that is needed will be used to cover that cost through this FY year is the amendment that I. I'm asking for to your paper.
Madam Vice President, I am there. It's July 1, 2014. For me, it's not an automatic kick into a new rate. What I'm wanting to have discussion of prior to that is what are the options for our citizens?
All right, so maybe the easiest thing, Dr. Newbill, would you please restate your motion?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to see if we can get to a place that incorporates Vice President's motion, that minimally the $800,000 necessary to fill the gap for this, these services through June 30 would be, that would be a given. But then I'm also looking for the part two of both GRTC and administration sitting down and looking at all options and opportunities, including state Medicaid and anything else, to get this to something that our citizens can bear in terms of options and preferably to be sustained at the current level that it would be going forward. If that might have been more muddy, I want to be really clear.
Let's take a pause button here. Ms. Graziano had her hand up.
Dan, I'm getting, I have a question and then, no, never mind. I'm yielding to Mr. Bilal's and then I'll ask my question.
Mr. Bilal's.
Okay. I'm sort of a little confused here on these motions. And so, I wonder, Ms. Newbill, Dr. Newbill, do you have a motion that asks for GRTC to study this?
I'm not looking, no ma'am, I'm not looking for a study.
They give us a plan of sustainability.
Yes, I'm looking for, they have a meeting on Thursday pertinent to the $2.9 million state funding. So, I'm looking for GRTC and administration to go to the table and come back with recommendations in terms of the, what you've proposed in terms of fees and preferably, not preferably, really looking at how do we ensure that citizens can afford to continue with the service as currently priced?
Do you sort of have a part two to the question?
So, Dr. Newbill's motion is to continue the paper and for the GRTC and City of Richmond to meet and come up with more recommendations for keeping the service as it stands today.
Right, by next council session and looking at this $2.9, starting as Vice President has mentioned, to fill that gap, first of all, minimally, I would add that part, that we're minimally starting the conversation there, and I think that's, yes.
Okay. Mr. President. Now, hold on, Ms. Graziano.
But I'm looking to go forward.
Just trying to get straight what we have out here. But I thought Ms. Robertson said that as, as amending Dr. Newbill's motion, yes, we would have that, we want to get that presentation back, we want to get that sustainability, but that this paper that we're looking at today would go into effect July 1st. Am I correct in that?
That was my initial statement, Ms. Graziano. What I'm, what I am hopeful that we can do, that we can pass this paper, we can amend this paper and pass this paper with using the $2.9 million to cover this FY year. That means that we can hopefully vote on this paper tonight. I don't know if we can or not. I just don't want to have, if we can find the money to close this gap, I don't want to have these citizens come back down here in two weeks when, if we can identify the source of money to close the gap tonight, that carries us to June 30th. Now, I grant you, the problem doesn't end with June 30th, and there is another, there is certainly a need for more analysis and more study and a more sustainable plan to be incorporated in. But if by some means we can, and what I'm hearing from the staff is that they are willing for this one time to cover this cost out of those additional funds to take us to June 30th. If that is the case, then we can move forward with that action. We don't have to call the citizens back in two weeks, but we will be calling the citizen back as we look at a sustainable plan that will dictate what our policy is going to be effective July 1st.
Okay. I'm trying to get to there, Mr. President. I think I can go to where Vice President is, as long as, prior to, prior to the end of this, we have a plan with a set of options.
So, your amended motion or accepting Vice President Robertson's recommended language is continue, to vote on the paper tonight with an amendment that would substantially change the paper, which would require a two-week continuance. So, it's to amend the paper for two weeks with the amendment being that it would not kick in until fiscal year 14, that it would, in that timeframe or sooner, GRTC, sooner, GRTC and the City of Richmond would meet again to find alternative sources of funding to maintain the service at the beginning of fiscal year 14.
And, Mr. President, I want to be clear in earnest. I'm not interested in a study. I'm interested in coming back with viable options that would allow us to continue, you know, beyond July, June 30th, 2014 at this current rate. So, if that's acceptable.
Mr. President.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Trammell.
Mr. President, just one question. That means if we vote on Cynthia's paper and bring some amendment of Ellen, we're not going to raise anything tonight. Everything will stay the same.
Everything will stay the same. It's just the GRTC doesn't know if they'll have the money to pay for it.
I'm sorry, what now?
It's just the GRTC doesn't know if they'll have the money to pay for it, and the city may have three-quarters of a million-dollar hole in their budget.
Okay, okay, yes.
Mr. Hagan.
Okay, could I, for a second, just take a step back and look at all of what has happened up to this point so that we know how GRTC has worked with the city and with city council on this? We did start with two options that we brought before council. You know, one option was looking at for the Care Plus as an entirety to go away. Well, we, in interacting with council and in testimony from the public, we worked with you all and discounted that. So, then we looked at option two and have pared that back significantly from what we originally proposed because, once again, we, we heard from, you know, compelling and very heartfelt testimony from the public, you all did, too, and at that time, we were just trying to see what we could do to get through this fiscal year and be as least impactful as possible. During all of those discussions, we also heard loud and clear what other options are there. So, we have really spent quite a bit of time looking at, for example, Medicaid and Logisticare. And the bottom line on that, for example, is that for folks using our system right now, using GRTC, they need to go through Logisticare to get that for free. GRTC cannot get funding from Logisticare to pay for it unless we become a provider for them. And if we become a provider for them, that means we're going to get even more trips and have even more of a peak hour demand and need more buses and operators. The Medicaid issue, it needs to be addressed through Logisticare, not with GRTC getting reimbursed by them. So, we've really looked into that. We heard you loud and clear, and we, that's, that's the best information that, that we've been able to get on that one issue. On, on the state funding issue, I mean, I've explained that one. I mean, you know, hopefully that money is sustainable into the future, but you still have to look at it initially because of politics, just because of what it is and it's related to performance measures. I've been a part of all the meetings on these funding sources. There's a lot of moving pieces and parts to it still. So, we really need to be confident and comfortable that it will be sustainable to start relying on it for operating funds. So, we've looked at the state side of it as best we can. I guess what I, what I want to make sure is that, that there's not the assumption here that we can go back to the drawing board and just solve all of it and not need this pared-back package of the $6 Care Plus fare, the $3 basic care fare, the reduction in service by three hours, because we might not be able to solve that. We certainly could try and work with the city in earnest. You all are our biggest customer. We are going to do whatever you want to do and work with you whatever way that you want, but we might not be able to solve this one. So, I just want to make sure, you know, that that is understood.
Ms. Trammell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hagan, I really appreciate your statement and all that, but you know what we need to go back and tell the state and, and the city officials, too, or the administration? All the ones that came down here tonight, and someone were from my 8th district, and I've gotten a lot of phone calls and emails and all of that begging me not to support this, but let them know if they don't have their jobs and they don't have the means of this transportation, do we want them homeless? Do we want them out on the street? That they're trying to do, they're trying to do all they can to be self-efficient and to take care of themselves. They're not coming down here asking us to take care of them. They're asking us, please keep the care services for them and don't raise the prices. That's what they're begging us. And what we need to go back and say, and I pray that everybody will see this, so they will know that, hey, they are just begging to keep their jobs and they're being dependent on care services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we are having the motion as amended circulated for everyone to see. Basically, what it would do is amend ordinance number 2013-142 as follows. On page five, line 22, after the word "on," strike out the date, January 5th, and insert the date July 1. In other words, the very last sentence of the ordinance is the date that it becomes effective, and this motion would change that effective date from January 5th, 2014, to July 1, 2014. Does everybody on council understand the motion? Any questions?
No, would you repeat the motion, please?
Yes. On page five, line 22, after the word "on," strike out the date January 5th and insert the date July 1st, and then the rest of the sentence reads 2014. The only thing at the end of the day with all our talking is that we would change the date that it would become effective. Therefore, if money is found, we could strike the ordinance. If money is not found, then it does give people under a year, but almost a year, in order to make a decision about what they're going to do if they utilize the Care Extended Service or Care Plus Service. This is a material change. It will require, if that amendment is adopted tonight, a two-week continuance. And then we'd have another public hearing on this matter in two weeks, and...
Mr. President?
That would be it.
Mr. President?
Vice President Robertson.
The objective that I think we are trying to achieve is the fact that, recognizing what we've been, what the staff has said, one-time funding for, to get us through this FY year. If we vote the paper that is before us down, then that means the current program stays in place. We would be also making the assumption that the $2.9 million is going to be there and you will use it to cover the cost for June 30th. If, if we, and, and that way, we will sustain the services as they currently are, which is the objective that we are attempting to do. The motion, the additional part of the motion that Dr. Newbill is interested in, the sustainable, in alternative sustainability option presented, can still be requested and such brought back to the council for consideration, for full adoption by, on July 1st, 2014. I think with that, if we, if Dr. Newbill would consider withdrawing her motion, and if it is the desire of council to take action to vote down this paper, we can sustain services and yet position ourselves to be able to move forward with full consideration of a sustainability plan that would take place effective July 1st for the new FY budget year. I'd like Dr. Newbill's opinion as it relates to that request, Mr. President.
Dr. Newbill.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I could support voting this paper down and retaining the rates as currently, as they currently are, as long as, as the last part you've said, we get a solid sustainability plan prior to the end of the fiscal year that this would take us through.
Wow, a lot of people, I heard Mr. Bilal's, I heard Mr. Hilbert, and I saw Mr. Agulasto's hand, so we are going to go alphabetically. Mr. Agulasto.
Thank you. I don't want to belabor this, but, you know, if we're going to make any changes to the GRTC budget, it has to be, it has to kind of come through the city's budgeting process, which we're just about to ramp up for, and that's going to get introduced in January or February. So, we can't delay until July of 2014. We need, we need immediate plan within the next six weeks. And, and secondly, you know, even if, even if the paper is going to be voted down, I certainly would love to see a paper introduced that authorized free fare service for any care user on the fixed route service. I mean, that was a proposal y'all came forward with. There's no reason that we can't go ahead forward with that option alone, whatever it is, but, but I don't see not doing something immediately as, as being helpful at all in this situation.
Alphabetically, Mr. Bilal's.
Know your ABCs. Just to answer Mr. Agulasto's question, free fares on fixed route service is part of this proposal. However, Mr. Hagan mentioned the uncertainty of the reliability of state funding and kicking this down the road, which, if this motion is accepted, is what we're going to be doing. We can't tell, just like with the schools, we can't tell them what to do with their money. All we can do is fund them. If they come up short, they do with what they've got. If we leave GRTC with a budget hole of $800,000, they're going to have to figure it out. They're going to have to cut fixed routes, they're going to have to... One of the options in 2008, when council instituted the non-mandatory care or Care Plus, that was not required by the federal government. That was, that was a service that they wanted to provide because the treasury was flush, and we all know what happened. That doesn't mean we should eliminate that absolutely. After seeing the care users come down here tonight, this is probably going to be the toughest night of public comment that I will, I will experience on council. It's very moving. And we need to help everybody that, that uses care service as well as GRTC. What I would recommend or suggest, this proposal is scheduled to take effect on January 5th because you need, what, 45 days the feds require? Is that correct?
We really need a good 60 days to just implement it, to make sure that we provide enough lead time so that the public knows what's coming, can plan accordingly. And we really think that at least 60 in this case is, is appropriate.
What I would propose is that, I agree with Ms., Dr. Newbill's motion in spirit, but not on the letter, in that it delays, and Ms. Robertson, that it delays it until July. What I would say is we vote on this paper as is, but that gives us approximately 15 days to work and figure out if we can, we've got until, according to city attorney, we can amend this paper anytime up until July 5th if it doesn't take effect, or if we want it not to take effect. I'm sorry, January 5th. So, we would be able to find a solution going forward that is a sustainable plan, but the last thing on earth I want to do after tonight is ask care users to come back down here one more time. If we amend this paper tonight, they'll be back in two weeks to comment on it, they'll be back two weeks after that to comment on it. As long as we keep bringing this up, they're going to comment on it. If we hold ourselves to our word and we say we will work and figure out a way to close that hole or to work with the administration and, and figure out a way to amend the fare, if, if Care Plus is $3 and we can find that money and that's sustainable, then that's a possible solution. But... But given the fact that the state's going to give us, or the state will vote on it on Thursday, we'll know by Friday when the dust settles, at least for one year, what we're going to get, maybe two. But for us to keep continuing to kick this down the road, I mean, a lot of these people have come down five or six times, and we've heard them. And we, we keep adjusting it. We've got to figure out the best way possible, but I don't think this motion or either the recommended motions are going to do that. I think we should take this on face value and then work together for the next two weeks, three weeks, two months, whatever it takes, to figure out a longer-term solution. But I don't think them coming back down here repeatedly is, is what we want to see, and I know it's not what they want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Bilalz. Mr. Hilbert.
Yes. First of all, Mr. President, I'd like, other than alphabetically to be the determination of who speaks, thank you, in the future, if you'd take that under consideration. I was just, my point of order was that it would take Dr. Newbill's, I guess withdrawing her motion with that, which I'm, I mean, she's certainly free to do what she likes, but I was going to support this motion of implementing this on July 1 and giving ourselves some timeframe to work this out. And I don't know that that's going to carry the day, and, but it seems to me that, I don't want folks to have to, have to come down and talk about this issue. On the other hand, you know, it's their right to do that, and I don't want anyone to interpret that as, I'm not interested in hearing what they have to say. I know it's a burden to come to these meetings, but, so I just, I'm concerned that that's somehow being interpreted as that, that we, we don't want to hear from people, and I'm sure my colleague didn't mean it that way, so I'm trying to, to say that, that I believe that we all do want to hear from people. But I would, I would support this motion as it's currently presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Now, there's a motion on the table that you all have in front of you. This will be the motion that we will vote on in just a minute. Any other comment or question before we vote on this motion? Ms. Mosby.
Okay, I'm, I'm still having a, confused about the motion, but I do want to say to the people, a lot of people came and their thought process was, because we're not in a wheelchair, we don't get it. Unfair statement. There are a lot of people that have issues outside of being in a wheelchair that I'm sure you feel your heart for. There are people in our families that are handicapped. I don't know about the rest, but I had an aunt that just passed wheelchair bound, a god sister that has multiple sclerosis. She's been in a wheelchair and blind many years. So I feel the disability issue. I don't have it personally, but I feel it, and I, I can't say I understand it, but I can say I feel it in my heart. This has been the most for me. This has been one of the things that make me wish I had on November 6th not had to do this. This is a lot. It is having to look in people's faces and hear their, their, their life story, basically, on what's going on with them. However, the end result that I was told that I had to do, what was, is what make the best decision. There are things in my household that I have to do to withhold from my daughter, because sometimes my money is right and we get to flourish and do things. And sometimes my money is not right, so I have to withhold some things from her, not because I don't want her to have it, not because I don't feel what she, I don't feel, no, it's because at that moment, something has gone wrong. In 2008, how many of council people were here to vote to give the, the plus? How many people were here? Were you all, did somebody ask you to give the plus? And you gave the plus? I guess my question is, what would make us think that if you got one, two, what, was it, three, four? Four people from 2008 that saw the necessity of the plus at that moment, what would think that we would not want to do that again when money is flourishing? If we pass this paper, I don't, I'm trying to figure out this, strike out the date and what that will be for today, but if we pass a paper that will close this budget and do what is necessary, I don't believe that any of these colleagues on here, if money became where we could do what we need to do, would not add the plus back if, if money was right. GRTC has worked tirelessly. I mean, I've called, John has called, Kathy's called, we've said, uh-uh, that's not working. No, that's not working. Every time we had these meetings, the answer is, that's not working. But to some degree, something has to give here. And I, and I don't understand your disability. I don't understand it because I'm not in it, but I do understand that we have to do something. We, we have to get to a place that we do something. So I am going to vote that we do the motion in hopes that the, the other eight people on this panel with me, when things get turned around, that we can look at adding the plus back to this thing to make it what you need at some point. But today, I'm saying that that's not where we are, and I'm going to have to go with what, where we are.
Thank you, Ms. Mosby. All right. I don't see any other...
Before the question is called, can I just be sure what this motion does? And if this is Dr. Newbill's motion?
Dr. Newbill, the motion in front of you is the recommended language by the city attorney to accomplish your goal of changing the effective date of this and giving us time to come back with a plan. Is that the intent of your motion?
I believe where I was was considering what the vice president put forward, which was voting this paper down, which would in essence retain the rates as currently are, as they currently are, and then having the opportunity to have GRTC to get with the administration and come back looking at options that would allow us to continue the rates as they currently are.
Does that mean that you are withdrawing your motion for consideration? Or do you want to vote on your motion?
I would be withdrawing the motion.
You're withdrawing your motion. The motion being withdrawn, the paper as it was at the beginning of this evening is still before us. See two people leaning in over on the left-hand side.
But, Mr. President, question, I am accepting the vice president's motion, amendment to the motion, which, if I...
Are you, instead of withdrawing your motion, accepting the friendly amendment to Vice President Robertson's, to your motion from Vice President Robertson? Or are you withdrawing your motion so a vote can be held on the actual paper?
Yes. Okay, let, let me be absolutely clear. If it is that the vice president's motion, okay, let me tell you where, and maybe I should just keep my motion on the table. Maybe that's what I should just do, because I'm not clear anymore that we've gone around this wagon. Willing to take a vote on, where I am is wanting to vote this paper down, which would retain, which would retain the rates as they currently are.
So your motion would not allow us to do that tonight?
That's right.
Your motion would necessitate...
My motion initially was going to continue and ask, you know, folks to come back. That's correct.
And if we take the city attorney's recommendation, which would basically meet Vice President Robertson's and your motion together, a friendly amendment to yours, it would still necessitate a continuance because it's a material change in the ordinance?
That's correct. That's what, that's correct, and that's why I guess this is more of an inquiry, if in fact, voting the motion down allows us to retain the rates as they currently are.
Yeah, voting your motion down just...
No, no, not my motion, the current paper down, I'm sorry.
Yes, you vote the current paper down, everything stays the same.
That's correct. Would retain, I'm, I'm saying, I shouldn't have said paper, I meant to say, so voting the current paper down would retain the rates as currently are, having GRTC look at any number of opportunities along with the administration to fill the hole, but also to talk about sustainability.
That's exactly right.
Right. That's where I'm trying to get to.
Okay, so you want to withdraw your paper?
Yes.
Or your motion?
Yes.
Dr. Newbill has withdrawn her motion. That brings the original paper back in front of us. We were in the middle of debate on that when we stopped to have debate on Ms., on Dr. Newbill's motion. Is there any further comment from any councilperson on the original paper?
Mr...
Ms. Graziano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to echo the words of my fellow councilpeople, this is a very, very hard decision, gut-wrenching, actually. I was on the 2008 council. We, we had money. We extended the service because we could afford it. We don't have that luxury today. It's sort of like buying a big flat-screen TV this year, and then next year, you can't buy your kid sneakers. We, we overextended ourselves on this, I think probably because we had no idea of the demand or the usage. We have been told by GRTC that it's increasing, and every council member here has talked about aging population. We had a presentation today, 75% of our families are childless, something like that from that presentation we had, or not childless, have no children. So we have an aging population that will be using this service more and more. I agree with Dr. Newbill that we need to go back to the drawing board and see what we can do for this, but I firmly believe that, that we need to pass this paper tonight. Maybe, as Mr. Bilalz said, maybe on Thursday, we'll find out what federal monies, monies we have. Maybe we can figure something out, but we cannot, to me, it's a balancing act, and we have our disabled riders, and we need to provide them service, but we have many riders in the city who are not disabled but do not have cars, and their only means of transportation, just as far disabled as the caravan, or are people going to work, it's a bus, taking them to work every morning and taking them home every night, and we need to balance between those two. And so for that reason, I'm going to vote for the original paper.
Thank you, Ms. Graziano. Any other comments from councilmembers? I see Ms. Mosby, I see Vice President Robertson. Okay. Ms. Mosby, then Vice President Robertson.
The motion is on the original paper, moving the date out. Is that correct?
No, she has withdrawn her motion. We are just voting on the paper.
On the original paper?
The original paper. May I move on to Vice President Robertson and come back to you if you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I, I, I thought we were still here in, in this place here.
All right, let me give you a chance to get together. Vice President Robertson.
Mr. President, I, I, I know that the audience has probably recognized the complication, the complicated issue that is before us, and also the heart and the desire and the spirit of this council to be responsive to all of the persons that have come down. This is a huge budget deficit that the Greater Richmond Transit Company is, is, has before them as it relates to covering the cost to continue the services as they are currently being offered for city residents of roughly $800,000 to take us through June 30th. I think what I have heard in addition from the persons that will be negatively impacted if we increase the rate or decrease the hours of the services and the Care Plus services by increasing the rate to $6 one-way, which is $12 for a round trip. Whereas I do not know whether or not any sustainability plan that will be brought back to us from Greater Richmond Transit will make it possible for us to continue to provide those services without some changes of increased fees to the riders. One thing is for certain, we have a new source of money that is coming to us this year. We are anticipating it to be 2.9. Certainly, it's going to be more than $800,000. The uses that we are planning to use this one-time funding for, as we're treating it as one-time funding, is to perhaps buy two buses. It is to increase our contingency fund from 17, from 7%, moving toward the desired goal of 15%, which we have been at 7% for quite some time. Correcting the signage, all of those are one-time uses, and I respect that. If we use these funds to cover the balancing of our budget, which I think is a fallacy on our part that at the beginning of the year when we adopt the budget, that we were not able to anticipate at that time that we would be short at the current level of services by $800,000. And because we have this windfall from the state of 2.9, I think it's fair to the riders to let them know tonight, for six months, this is a notice. Unless something happened differently, it is very likely that we may have to increase rates beginning July 1st, and we may have to go back to this proposal that you have presented as it relates to a budget shortfall. But this is six months plus that we are saying today that we can cover this service to June 30th with this one-time shortfall funding that we are getting from the state, and unless there's a sustainability plan that is presented to us between now and June 30th, we may be right back where we are for the July 1st, 2014 budget cycle. It's going to be hard for me to vote to discontinue services, knowing that we got $2.9 million that may be coming in as a one-time fund that could cover our costs by only $800,000 out of that 2.9, and make a decision to put up signs and make a decision to buy two buses, which is a drop in the bucket compared to the demand that we have for new buses, when we have a short window of opportunity to perhaps give some people an opportunity to find out alternative means for transportation if they can between now and June 30th. I think that is the right thing to do, and that's what I would like to ask my colleagues to consider as a one-time initiative, hopefully with a sustainability plan, and I support my gentleman from the 5th district, Mr. Agulasto's recommendation of a paper coming to us immediately to provide the free services for our routine bus transit services that are available at the present time for those persons who are eligible for care. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Robertson.
Hopefully, we're voting the paper down.
Any other councilmembers who have to have a final comment before we close?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hilbert.
Did I hear my colleague from the 6th district put a motion before us?
I didn't.
A motion, we have a paper before us.
Yes, ma'am.
And so my recommendation is that we vote this paper down so that we can continue to provide the same quality of services for six months, and that I support Ms. Newbill's request for a sustainability plan to be presented to us as quickly as possible, as well as I'm requesting a new paper to be introduced for free services for all of the care-eligible riders. So I don't know if there's a need for a motion as much as there's a need to call the question on the vote, on the paper that's before us, Mr. on the vote on the paper that's before us, Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you.
I may be incorrect.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hilbert. Dr. Newbill.
Yes, I'm going to apologize for the lack of clarity trying to get to this place, but I would concur with my colleague in asking that we all consider voting this paper down again so that the current rates would be in place for individuals who've come before us this evening and in the upcoming budget process as well. We have the opportunity in over the next few months to receive a sustainability plan as the Vice President has mentioned, but would ask that we vote this paper down so that those rates can stay and then have that plan come forward.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. I see no other councilmembers who wish to make comment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council is voting on item number 34, ordinance number 2013-142. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
No.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
No.
Ms. Newbill?
No.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Folks, thank you all for coming down. It's been a long evening and a hard evening. I really appreciate your time, your willingness to make an impact on your city.
That concludes the regular agenda. At this point, I'd like to move on with any motions to amend and continue, please.
There are two motions for consideration. I'll start with item number seven, ordinance number 2013-172. That's to authorize a special use of 309, 311, 313, 313 and 1/3, 313 and 2/3, and 315 Coorden Avenue, 310 and 314 West 15th Street, 1514 McDonald Street, 1508 McDonald Street, 1506, 1504 and 1502 McDonald Streets for the purpose of retail usage. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page 2, line 6, after the word dated, strike out the date 9th and insert the date September 3rd. Page 2, line 7, after the word revised, strike out the date June 7 and insert the date September 23rd. After the text "L-2" and, strike out the sheet number C-5 and insert the sheet number C-1. Page 2, line 9, after the date February 26, 2013, insert a comma followed by the text "and last revised September 26, 2013." I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper and to continue it until Monday, October the 28th. Councilor Graziano, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Council is voting on Councilor Graziano's motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper as read and to continue it until Monday, October the 28th. Mr. Bilalz? Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell? Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That motion has been adopted and that paper will be before you on October the 28th for consideration. Next is item number 38, ordinance number 2013-112, to amend ordinance number 2004-216-272, which authorizes a special use of 2623 East Broad Street to reduce the restrictions placed upon commercial space within the building. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page 5, line 16, after the letter "L," add the text "One year after the effective date of this amending ordinance, the property owner shall request that the City Planning Commission hold a planning, a public hearing at which it shall review the special use permit to evaluate whether the special use of the property tends to create congestion in streets, roads, alleys, and other public ways and places in the area surrounding the property. If the commission finds that the special use of the property does not tend to create congestion in streets, roads, alleys, and other public ways and places in the area surrounding the property, no further action shall be required. If the commission finds that the special use of the property tends to create congestion in streets, roads, alleys, and other public ways and public places in the area surrounding the property, the commission may recommend to the city council that this ordinance be amended or that the privileges granted by this ordinance be revoked." Page 6, line 4, at the beginning of the line, insert the letter "M." I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper and to continue it until Monday, October the 28th. Ms. Newbill, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Council is voting on Councilor Newbill's motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper as follows and to continue it until Monday, October the 28th. Mr. Bilalz? Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto? Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell? Ms. Newbill? President Samuels?
Aye.
That amendment has been adopted and that paper will be before you again on Monday, October the 28th. Those are all of the amendments that I have for consideration.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you called earlier and signed up for a time to speak to city council, your time is here. It's the city council comment period. We appreciate everyone sitting through this meeting. It's run a little longer than most of our meetings have this year so far. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Yes. Melvin Jones. Melvin Jones.
I don't see Mr. Jones.
Bob Valenti?
Mr. Valenti's here.
Good evening, councilpeople. I'm Bob Valenti and I come here concerning Monroe Park about putting some streetlights in the park at nighttime because people out there are being robbed and people sitting out there waiting for people to rob the people and all. And I talked to Mr. Haywood Harrison, the architect that's getting ready to build the project in six, four months in the park. And I told him I was coming down here tonight to speak about Monroe Park and putting lights in there temporarily to face up between the dormitory and across where the women's dormitory is at nighttime because people are sitting out there at nighttime getting robbed and stuff. You know what I'm saying? And I've been down to the hospital visiting people, my friends that's, about last week I got stabbed and robbed down there in Ryland Franklin Street, my friend, you know what I mean? And the city council needs to be approved to put some streetlights instead of little small ones in Monroe Park to lighten up at nighttime somehow, if you can, you know what I mean? And it's terrible, you know, at nighttime, you know what I mean? I even talked to John Mudi, Chief of Police for VCU right now. He's on vacation for a week and all and, and like I told him, I'm coming down here to speak on y'all, maybe you can all talk with the city to put some regular streetlights in Monroe Park, you know, like over there on Fendel and Ladies Mile Road over there, Mr. Hilbert's area, you know, that park over there, what's the name of that park on Ladies Mile and Fendel?
You're talking about Ladies Mile and Chamberlain is Pollard Park.
No, Ladies Mile and Fendel. Fendel.
Okay, I'm trying to.
Well, Willie Nodge, there's a park.
You see what I'm saying? With any regular streetlights in there, you know what I'm saying? The little easy-bitty lights like you got going down Gray Street, it's not helping the same, you know what I mean? Like me, I live way over in Southside, right? And I come over there at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, I see people sitting up there in Monroe Park, you know what I mean? They're not no good people, you know what I'm saying? But somehow, you know, they like the police are going to monitor the park, the rides who they're here to see who's sitting in the park, you know what I'm saying? Somehow if they could see it lit up a little bit, maybe they might do something, you know what I mean? So I'm asking, you know what I mean? I mean, I have some people a couple blocks away on, I have some street, and I mean, come on, you know, can y'all put some streetlights in Monroe Park instead of little things, you know what I mean? It's very, it's terrible, man. This is your district, you know what I mean? The Samuels. You know, it's terrible, man. I mean, it's like out there at the round where the fountains at out there, right? I've been on the city for about two years now where the fountains at. They got bushes out there like this, you know what I mean? Where the fountains at, you know what I'm saying? And I come through there and you got people out there having sex, hiding stuff in those bushes, trying to get them to take the bushes down, you know, around there where the fountains at.
Mr. Valenti, your time is up.
You know, okay.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Valenti, just so you know, Mr. Staidell is at the back. He's in a gray shirt with a blue tie. If you'd like to speak with him, he's the Director of Public Utilities for the city and is in charge of streetlights.
Next speaker is Francis Dade. Francis Dade. David Lindsay.
Good evening, city councilmembers. My name is David Lindsay. I'm from the 3rd District. I come to you as for looking for a solution. The problem, the problem is that you had employees that was working for the city but was laid off due to the shutdown from the schools. And they had a meeting and in this meeting with the management and supervisors, they was told that they would get a call back, but they never received this call back. In August, first part of August, the jobs that they supposed to have been called back for were posted and other people were hired in their position. And they feel that they've been unjusted by the city by not giving the opportunity to receive these callbacks so they can be employed. And these people are out here unemployed at this time. Some of these people are family people and they wanted a job in out of good faith for, in the meeting that was, they had with management, it was told to them that not to file for unemployment due to the fact that if they filed for unemployment and they get called back, then they may have to pay that money back. And this was told unto them. So you had people out there going on for three months or so, not receiving any kind of income. And for when the time for schools to start back opening, and as I spoke earlier in August, they found out that their jobs had been posted. One particular gentleman who was employed and laid off, he checked on the situation, talked to the people downtown about it. They told him to reapply for that position. They also told him that they had called him, but he had turned the job down, but he didn't get the call. So I'm employing myself to come to this board and I don't think it's a very difficult task for this board to take on to see that these people get fairly just by receiving their jobs back when they had put good faith in the city and hoping that they could receive their job back and be employed again. Now, school had already started and we are in October, mid-October, and they still don't have a job. And I appreciate whatever this board can do to see that these people who've been laid off receive employment.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you.
Are you talking about the city or the city school?
The city schools.
Okay.
Work in the city school system.
What you be looking to do is speaking with?
The school board?
Either Superintendent Lewis or the school board.
I have done that, sir.
Okay. They're the ones that have control and authority over school board personnel.
Okay, I've done that.
Mr. Robertson?
And I've been waiting to hear from the school board. I spoke with them last Monday on this issue and I feel though, I haven't heard a word, I bring it to my councilpeople. And maybe, it may not be you guys' issue, but they're city employees or they were city employees and they were like assistant from whoever can give them assistance.
Okay. Mr. Hilbert?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Lindsay, for coming down. As the Chair of the Education and Human Services Committee, I'd be happy to write a letter to the acting superintendent as well as to the school board. I have made inquiries on this as well, have not gone to the school administration but with the member of the school board and have not received an answer back either. So let me just make this a more formal request unless there's an objection from councilmembers. And this would be, certainly Mr. Lindsay's a constituent of mine, but I do think that, you know, folks deserve an answer to the extent that it's possible. They could say that this is a personnel matter and therefore can't make it public, but I'll make the ask.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Thank you, Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Next speaker is William Bullock.
Mr. Bullock?
Good evening. President Samuel, Ms. Robertson, my representative in my district, Mr. Hilbert. My name is William Bullock. Come to you to express my concern about the public procurement issues that involving the two schools that y'all painted that was built last year. I was awarded the contract to do both schools, Broad Rock and Oak Grove School, last year. When I went there, the both schools was four months behind in real, as far as getting the work done. When we went there, we brought the job up to power within maybe two months. After doing this, what happened is when we've completed the job in last March, what happened was that the general contractor, he refused to pay us the balance of our money, which is approximately $130,000. At this time right now, he is in the process of wanting me to take and sign all my rights away as far as the leave away was, because once I do that, I don't have no other option of getting my money back from this man. So what he's asking me was the fact was that I can't put a lien on the city because it's city property. We have been back and forth, back and forth, and he refused to back down. I asked him to meet with me on several occasions. Each time he said he was going to meet with me, he didn't meet with me. The problem is regarding this situation is the fact that I've been in business for 40 years. I know my work, I do my job, but I cannot afford to be coming to the city and do work and this man take away my profit. Saying this, this is just like the Jim Crow days in the past. We come in, we do the work, and when we finish, we can't get our money. This is not correct. This is not the first time this happened. This has been going on for days and ages since I've been here in this city of Richmond right here. This is just like the Jim Crow days. But my point is that I would like to see this city council appoint a committee to investigate how they can protect the minority contractors that come on this job to, when they finish the job, they can come off the job without being beat up like I have. Just like I said, I've been in this city for 40 years. I've been on Hur Street and Ms. Robertson District for 14 years. They didn't have no problem with my work. Matter of fact, we helped them. And after we helped them do their work, what they did, they kicked me in the butt and worked against me to make sure I didn't get my money. So I would like to see this council take and do an in-depth study on how they can take and when minorities come on the job to get their work, they do the work, but we need our money in order for us to grow.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up, but Lila Jefferson is here in the audience in the far back. She just raised her hand. She's in a nice white sweater with a black dress.
Who is this?
Lila Jefferson is raising her hand right back there. Did you see her, sir? She's with the mayor's office. She's going to put you in touch with minority business as well as anybody else. She's gonna put you in touch with minority business as well as anybody else that is appropriate to make sure your issue is addressed.
We've been in touch with the Byron Marshall. We've been in touch with the Ms. Vicki Rivers' office. Nobody has been able to solve this problem. And I'm not the only one. The other minority contractors, they scared to come here or they don't want to scare, say anything because of retaliation, not getting no jobs. But the point is that it don't make no sense that you let big contractors come in this city, take money out of this city, and don't let, leave the money in the city so that the minorities there can grow. It don't make no sense.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Mr. President.
Vice President Robertson?
This situation has come up on several occasions where subcontractors have not, have brought it to our attention that they not have been paid for their subcontracts. And it's a difficult situation because the city contracts with the prime or general contractor. However, I think that it's important that perhaps we could have the Minority Business Office to share with us what type of provisions they put in place to ensure that the general contractor is not paid without the waivers and liens that they need signed by the subcontractors to ensure that all the subcontractors are paid in the deal. So I don't know what their procedures are, but perhaps they could come before the Finance and Economic Development Committee to share with their policies and procedures and we can determine whether or not there are ways that we need to strengthen our internal policies.
Would you do finance or government operation?
Whichever you recommend, Mr. President.
Let's see, I've got finance and government operation chairs right in front of me. Ms. Graziano. Mr. Angelasto.
I just wanna add one thing on to Vice President Robertson's comment. And this, it really, what his point is, is the carrying cost that the subs are doing, basically financing the bigger entities. And it might be helpful to have a CART request in to see whether through procurement, we can require, once a payment is made from the city, to the person who receives payment from the city, that they have a turnaround clause to pay their subs. Because right now, they may have different terms with their subs and it's more difficult for the small business to try and collect their receivables from the bigger businesses. And if we can do something through procurement, and that might be something that we could consider through a CART request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Angelasto.
Mr. President, because, I'm sorry, just adding that suggestion. I think maybe we need to hear what they have to say about it. Because, and I don't know if this is the case, I don't know what the case is, I think we need to be careful to make sure that the job gets done according to the agreements prior to that payment. That's all. I just, I think we need to hear what they have to say first.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is William Jones.
Mr. President, members of council. I thought at first I was nervous, but I'm freezing. So I retired from the city of Richmond. In fact, I worked in several of the districts in code enforcement and I'm also, I was in the fire department. My business is Honey Mac Security. I'm a service-disabled veteran. My business is certified with the federal government and also with the state under program. I'm gonna trot at fire for effect from what Mr. Bullock just said. I'll read to keep myself from being emotionally involved in this. Good, good, good evening and city council members. As you can see by the first exhibit in the packet I presented to you, I'm under the threat of lawsuit for even being here talking to the owner of the project. And the owner of the project is the city of Richmond. Ms. Graziano, I heard what you said about we should check with the contractors first. I mean life safety. We install all the fire alarms and security system, either it works or it doesn't work. So it's not an issue of, well, is the contractor telling the truth? No, we have to have it inspected. The sad thing is, I spent $2,200 in taxes to the city of Richmond and my profit from the schools was less than that. That's a shame. We bitted on these projects to get the lowest bid in so we can work on the projects. Well, when we get the lowest bid, the problem with that is that we've already cut all their In fact, we did all the work. We worked through Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years. So I didn't anticipate the project going through that particular period of time. I had to pay my people double time and a half. I got an exhibit in the packet that I gave you showing that, they said you can, because we bitted on a project in a perfect world, the architect comes and he designs the project and you go and put all your stuff in. But the problem is with it is, the architect, when he designs it, forgets things. And therefore, we end up having to do change orders to fix those things. It costs us money. We finance it. Small businesses like myself. Well, when we finance the project, then we have to go justify to the contractor to get our money, which they do not pay us that money. I've gotten paid the contract amounts. I did the Broad Rock Community Center. It cost me $89,000 to do that project. As you can see, the architect said, well, you can do it, but don't do it exceeding $64,000. It's no way we could have done it. And it passed the inspection. So therefore, we just did the work. We had all the documentation that paid us. I went to the Office of Minority Business and said, they're not paying us. They said, don't worry, we'll get your money. Two weeks, a week ago, Mr. Winston told me from the Office of Minority Business that the contractor decided he's not gonna pay you because you owe the supplier money. The supplier is Stanley Black and Decker, which we did work for at Detuna of almost a half million dollars for the last two years. They supplied us with money for this project. And now I can't pay them back. It's ruined our relationship. And I'm gonna, I'm staying to lose over a million dollars this year because I could not pay them because the contractor wouldn't pay me. What's wrong with that picture? I'm trying to keep the emotional part out, but it doesn't make sense to just give somebody $100,000 and walk away. I need help. My next step on this, because I cannot stop. My next step is to take it federally because I'm a veteran, a service-disabled wounded veteran. And I'm not getting my money? I need your help. Can you do it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Graziano, we're gonna add that to the prior gentleman's complaint, please. Thank you very much. I believe that concludes our citizen comment period. At this point, we've reached the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
The consent agenda items for this evening are as follows. Item 3, ordinance number 2013-155, to authorize a special use of 1210 Huntland Road for the purpose of a day nursery for up to 12 children. Item 5, ordinance number 2013-167, to declare a public accessory for and to authorize the acquisition of 901 East Canal Street, 911 East Canal Street, and 210 South 10th Street for the purpose of public parking. Item 6, ordinance number 2013-169, to renown the rights to receive payment on the debt due to the city in the amount of $18,875,000 plus interest in the amount of $15 million associated with the parking facility construction at 901 East Canal Street pursuant to Richmond Metropolitan Authority Downtown Expressway Parking Deck Revenue Bonds. Item 8, ordinance number 2013-197, to amend the ordinance which authorized a special use of 900 West Franklin Street to authorize additional signage and an increase in radius within which required parking must be provided. Item 9, ordinance number 2013-198, to conditionally rezone 1910 and 1914 East Franklin Street, 110, 112, 114, 116, 118, 120, and 122 North 20th Street, 115 North 19th Street, and 1907 East Great Street from the M1 Light Industry District to the B535C General Central Business District. Item 10, ordinance number 2013-200, to authorize a special use of 315 Maple Avenue for the purpose of authorizing non-medical office use. Item 11, ordinance number 2013-201, to authorize a special use of 800 North Cleveland Street for the purpose of outdoor dining. Item 12, ordinance number 2013-202, to authorize a special use of 418 North 25th Street for the purpose of authorizing a mixed-use development with a multifamily dwelling of up to 22 units and uses permitted in the urban business district. Item 13, ordinance number 2013-203, to authorize a special use of 1310 Rosneath Road for the purpose of authorizing multifamily dwelling total up to 194 units and office use. Item 14, ordinance number 2013-204, to authorize a special use of 3027 and 3029 Park Avenue for the purpose of authorizing four two-family attached dwelling units. Item 16, ordinance number 2013-209, to authorize the Chief Administrative Officer to accept $250,000 from the Virginia Commonwealth University and to appropriate the amount to the Department of Public Works Traffic Calming Idlewood Roundabout Project for the construction of the roundabout at the intersection of Idlewood Avenue, Grayland Avenue, and an off-ramp from the downtown expressway. Item 17, ordinance number 2013-210, to authorize Council Chief of Staff to execute a lease agreement between the city and Global Spectrum for the purpose of leasing space within the Richmond, the Greater Richmond Convention Center for the council, for the City Council Senior Resource Fair on October 31st. Item 18, resolution number 2013-R187, to temporarily waive the residency requirement for Ubran Ali proposed by City Code Section 2-1112C1. Item 19, resolution number 2013-R188, to approve $2,500 from the Council District Fund for the 7th District to support the Greater Fulton Future Community Vision and Agreement. Item 20, resolution number 2013-R203, to approve $1,696 from the Council District Fund for the 9th District to assist with the costs associated with the Richmond City Council Senior Resource Fair. Those are all the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to any of the papers on the consent agenda?
My name is Chris Dorsey. I'm opposed to everything on the consent agenda because I oppose this legislation being bundled together and put forward with very little discussion and what will, as usually, be passed unanimously by council with very little regard to anything except for the, I don't know, bribes and whatever else is driving this, this kind of behavior. And I wanna also point out that there are 20 items on this consent agenda. Not a huge consent agenda, as consent agendas go, but 10 are special use permits, meaning that you have to waive your own rules in order to get whatever you want pushed through. Or actually, it's more accurate to say, whatever it is that the people who control you, the contractors and the construction kickbacks, you have to waive your own rules to get this put forward. Some of this stuff is happening in my neighborhood and the neighbors aren't happy about it. I wanna bring up, I guess, the next thing is the wave of the residency requirement for, for employees of council. Now, I really think that everyone who works for, and especially for the government, the city council of Richmond, should live in the city of Richmond. If that's not the case, and I'm reading this wrong, then it is not very well-written for people to comprehend, which is normally the tactic that's used. But I just wanna be on record as saying, if you work for the city government, one ought to live in the city. And I think that that is pretty cut and dry as to why, that that should be the case. Again, the special use permits, they've gotta stop. You guys, each meeting are putting through at least 10 items every time where you're waiving the rules and, and just saying, it doesn't matter what the rules are, we're gonna push it forward anyways. The special use permits, they've gotta go. And I really can't stop, you know, not, not state how disappointing, more disappointing than normal this, this meeting is. And again, we've got an election coming up, you know, people should really take note on what the government is doing with their money. And people are struggling.
Dorsey.
People, excuse me, I have the floor. People are struggling, and I must say that judging from this consent agenda, the people on council, they don't care one bit. And I'm sure, as the sun will come up tomorrow, that that is the case. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Dorsey, I'm gonna remind you, you have to keep your comments germane. You're not gonna have, you're done with your three minutes, sir, but you need to-
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'm well aware of this and I'm well aware of your standing and what I'm saying and the fact that I have my First Amendment guarantee.
Are there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to any of the papers tonight? Seeing none, are there those that wish to speak in favor of any of the papers tonight?
Good evening. My name is Triva Perry, and I live at 1313 Spurance Road in the city. And I am here to speak for item number 3, for Ms. Blans Daycare. It's right in my neighborhood and she happens to be my babysitter when my child required a babysitter. And I consider the services that she provide excellent services. And I don't think that her keeping or extending, increasing the amount of kids that she keep has anything to do with the traffic flow or anything that happens in our neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak in favor of anything on the consent agenda? Seeing none, bring it back to council for any comment. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the question?
Counsel is now voting on the consent agenda, which consists of item 3, 5, 6, 8 through 14, 16 through 20. Mr. Bliles?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Angelasto?
Aye, with the exception of 5 and 6, ordinance 2013-167 and 169, that's a no.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye on everything except number 5 and 6, no.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuel?
Aye.
The consent agenda has been adopted.
Thank you very much. Expedited resolutions, I believe we have at least one.
That is correct. We have one item for expedited consideration, that is resolution number 2013-R204, to support a change in use of a portion of city-owned real estate known as a public safety building located at 501 North 9th Street, so that such real estate may be used as a- located at 501 North 9th Street, so that such real estate may be used as a shelter for homeless persons in the city of Richmond who would otherwise be exposed to extreme temperatures and inclement weather conditions. I'll need to have a motion for expedited consideration of that paper. Counselor Graziano, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Counsel is voting on Counselor Graziano's motion for expedited consideration of resolution number 2013-R204. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper is before you for consideration.
Thank you. This is a paper that I asked to be expedited. There is a issue in the city regarding the emergency overflow homeless shelter in cold weather. There are members of the administration here that would like to explain the purpose of this resolution and what we can expect to see from them in the future as well. The administration will come forward, please.
Good evening. The purpose of this resolution is to allow-
I'm sorry, can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Phyllis Grooms Gordon, and I'm the Program Manager for Homeless Services for the Department of Social Services. Thank you. The purpose of this resolution is to allow the Department of Social Services to use the public safety building for the emergency overflow shelter. These shelter services are designed to, were designed to start October 1, and they are activated anytime the temperature falls to 40 degrees or less, including wind chill factor. On September 27, we learned that our current vendor would no longer be the vendor, so that put us in an emergency situation. We didn't have time to actually go out and put an RFP on the street again, so we did a bid solicitation, and we have a vendor who will operate the overflow shelter, but we needed a space. So the space is an emergency solution for us. We are to come back to council with an ordinance on October 28, and we are also clear that this is only for this year, only from the time that we activate, let's say, October 15, it was supposed to be October 15 through April 15, but it's only for this period of time. We will be soliciting for a new shelter site for the upcoming year, next year.
Thank you. So council understands this is a change in use of city-owned real estate which requires an ordinance. However, we anticipate temperatures may drop before an ordinance could be introduced, sent to committee, and back to council. I'm not real interested in not having a cold weather overflow shelter. This resolution acknowledges that an ordinance will be forthcoming from the administration, but basically says we will look favorably upon that ordinance when it arrives. Other questions? Seeing none. Ladies, thank you so much for doing such a good job presenting the information.
Thank you.
Are there those who wish to speak in opposition? Are there those who wish to speak in support? Bringing it back to council.
That's a lady.
Oh, I see someone.
My name is Angela Jones, and I'm in opposition of the space. I actually have been working on homelessness for nine years now. I've earned my doctorate. I've been before the City Council for the last nine years, and you've not done a good job. And I'm still homeless, and trillions in the bank belong to me. I've sent you another citizen's request, I've sent you four letters, and I've not got a response from you, not even been called to speak on any of the things that I've reported to you. And so now, I'm, 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 I don't want to go into the other things, but I'm in opposition of this space because I own the space. I own the whole building over there, and I ask you in those letters to verify what I've been saying to you for the last nine years, as it pertains to city properties, as it pertains to trillions of dollars in Franklin Federal Savings and Loan, another building, 626 East Broad Street. You have the University of Richmond, they are moving trillions of dollars, the bank lines are still open, and that's why I fear other properties such as that particular building, people's confidentiality, their safety, Richmond Memorial Hospital, people living in it insecure, I mean, no security, all kinds of things that you have just allowed the buildings to go down. And I own all those properties, and you've not addressed me like you need it to.
Anyone else to speak in favor and opposition? All right, seeing none, bring it back to council. Seeing none, please call the question, Madam Clerk.
Counsel is voting on resolution number 2013-R204. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill? President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you. I don't believe there's any other expedited papers, which means that we now get to go to the approval of the minutes.
The minutes to be approved are from the September 23 formal, September 23 informal, and September 30, council annual retreat. I need a motion to approve those minutes. Councilmember Agulasto, will you make that motion for approval of those minutes?
Approve the minutes, so moved.
Counsel is voting on Councilmember Agulasto's motion to approve the minutes as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
President Samuels?
Aye.
Thank you, those minutes have been approved.
Reports and announcements, is there a volunteer to go first? Mr. Agulasto beat Dr. Newbill by a hair. Mr. Agulasto.
Thank you, Council President. We'll be brief with the announcements tonight. We had a cleanup scheduled for this coming Saturday, October 19. That cleanup has been canceled. On Tuesday, October 22, the Oregon Hill Neighborhood Association will be meeting at 7:00 PM at the Williamburg Community House. The following day, Wednesday, October 23, I will be hosting a district-wide meeting, and will be at the Swansboro Elementary School. That meeting begins at 6:30 PM. We have invited city staff members from code enforcement, and we'll be also updating on district capital improvement projects. Betsy Carr will be in attendance to talk about general assembly agenda items, and Mamie Taylor will be there with an update from the Richmond Public Schools as well. Again, that meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 23, at 6:30 PM in the Swansboro Elementary School. On the same day, also in the district, unfortunately, there's a scheduling conflict, but October 23 at 7:00 PM, the Fan District Association is hosting a forum at Benford Middle School to discuss the proposed Floyd Avenue Bike Boulevard. This will affect those residents of the 5th District that live along Floyd, but it will also be of interest for those nearby. The forum will be at Benford Middle School, which is at 1701 Floyd Avenue, and the city's pedestrian bicycle and trails coordinator, Jake Helmbold, Helmbold, will be making the presentation again 7:00 PM on October 23, but I do hope that many folks will show up to Swansboro at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agulasto. Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I simply would like to extend an invitation to all of Richmond seniors to come out for the 2013 Richmond Metro Senior Information and Resource Fair that is scheduled for Thursday, October 31, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM at the Richmond Convention Center, that's 403 North 3rd Street. Again, information, one-stop shop for seniors, as well as entertainment and more. Again, that's the senior fair, Thursday, October 31. Thank you.
Newbill, who would be the next? Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce that this week, the Education and Human Services Committee will meet this Wednesday, October 16, 5 o'clock here in council chambers, will receive a presentation for Dr. John Baumann, the Offender Aid and Restoration Executive Director, and he will also provide a discussion on services of OAR, Offender Aid and Restoration, and offender reentry services. We'll also have the conveners of the reentry council introduce the committee and discussions on mapping offender services within the city. The, I do want to report here, the last few meetings I've been talking about a rash of burglaries in my district, and I can report this evening that they are significantly down over the past four weeks. And I really want to thank the police department for that, but I also want to thank the residents that you got on the phone, reported suspicious activity, that you secured your sheds, you turned on lights, you looked out for your neighbor, you trimmed your hedges, and really made sure that you put things away and not leaving them either inside in your automobile or out in your yard unattended. It's because of you that the number of arrests are up, and several people have been identified related to these thefts. So thank you very much, and I also want to throw in here for those that have not been doing this, to always lock your car, never leave anything in view, your iPods, your iPhones, lock all your doors and your windows in your home, leave those porch lights on, look at your property and see if there's hiding places such as bushes and so forth. This is really a great demonstration that when people work together and rely upon the police, but also take initiative to try and watch out for themselves and their neighbor, that we can indeed make a difference. Finally, I want to add that the 3rd District has an email blast that goes out a couple of times a week. They'll have announcements regarding district and council activities, as well as all city projects. If you would like to be added to this email list, please call Lisa Townes at 646-6055 or email her at lisa.towns, T-O-W-N-E-S, at richmondgov.com. And I want everyone to know that your email information will be kept confidential within our office. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Who would like to go next? Mr. Bilalz and then Ms. Graziano.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the Floyd Avenue Bike Boulevard meeting that Mr. Agulasto mentioned in the Senior Resource Fair from Dr. Newbill, just one meeting to announce in the first. Mary Munford proposed, or feasibility study for a proposed gym and/or community center will be held Wednesday, November 6, at 6 o'clock at the school's auditorium. You can still look at some of the design aspects of the property and communicate concerns, ideas, possible solutions to the design firm at johnbilalz.com. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bilalz. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, we changed the date, so I want everybody to know that finance is going to be October 24, and that's going to be at 2 o'clock because governmental ops runs right behind that. So everybody mark your calendars, finance, October 24, 2 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graziano. Ms. Mosby?
I have one announcement, and that is our 9th District Community Meeting. It will be at the Goodwill Community Employment Center on 6301 Milothean Turnpike. That's Thursday, the 17, between 6:00 to 7:30. And we, on the agenda, we're going to be talking about the Jank Road Improvement Project. So if that is something important to you, I need you there. This is the opportunity to ask questions, get questions answered. And we will also have Goodwill giving us a presentation on resumes and online application assistance and some job leads. So if that's information, that is good information. So I need you there, bring your young adults that 16 and up that can work, and let's find out some information about resume application and job leads. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosby. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you. First of all, I want to take this time to thank all of my colleagues on City Council, the Chief of Staff, and our staff on the 3rd floor, the City Clerk, and the staff on the 2nd floor, the citizens of the 8th District, our Police Department, our Fire Department, and Henry Mase, for sharing their love and support for me and my family after the passing of my mother-in-law, Ms. Helen Trammell. Thank you all. Also, I want to thank all of our staff for helping me with my public safety meeting and our 8th District meetings. And I want to personally say thank you, Ronald Harris, for all of your help and support and for all that you have done at our meetings to help my seniors. Thank you so much. Residents of the 8th District and others, our 8th District meeting will be this Thursday, October 17. That's this Thursday, October 17, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Satellite Restaurant Lounge, 4,000 Blackwood Jefferson Davis. If you want to know what's going on at the Hickory Hill Community Center, please be there. I'm getting so many calls in reference to, you know, what's going on at the Hickory Hill Community Center, how come things are not happening? So please come out there so you can talk to, our guests will be Norman Maryfield, Director of the Recreation and Parks and Community Facilities, Deborah Morton, Deputy Director of Parks Recreation, and she'll be there to give us presentations about what is going on at the Hickory Hill Community Center, line dancing, the gym, and all kinds of other things. Also Larry Miller, Deputy Director to his Department of Recreation and Parks. Also, our police officers and our firefighters will be there to answer questions and to let us know what's going on in the 8th District. If you have any questions, you can call my home. Again, my home number is 233-7382. That is my home. Do not call the office. Also, my cell number, my personal cell is 240-5050. Again, that's my personal cell, 240-5050. Hope to see you Thursday, this Thursday, October 17. This right here is your free smoke alarm. If you will call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, the firefighters will come to your home, and they will install this. This is in the city of Richmond. They will come to your house, they will not leave the smoke alarm. Some people saw something on one of the news channels where the firefighters were leaving the smoke alarm with the citizens for them to install that. They don't do that in the city. These firefighters, men and women, will come to your house, they will install it. Also, if you need a battery, they will put the battery in the smoke alarm. Also, if you want to go to your nearest fire station, they will, you can make an appointment for the firefighters to come to your home. So please remember, these, these smoke alarms will save your life, so please have a working smoke alarm in your house. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trammell. Vice President Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of announcements that I'd like to make that have events that are coming up in the 6th District on this Saturday, October 19, the Bellmead Oak Grove Community Water Day Shed cleanup is taking place from 9 to 3. That's right on the adjacent side to the football fields. The Hall Street Merchant Association is having their annual Merchants Festival on Saturday as well, 10, October 19, from 11 to 7. The Long Walk to Freedom is scheduled for this Saturday. I don't know how you're going to get, split yourself to be at all these places. The Long Walk to Freedom is a reentry Freedom Walk, begins at the jail at 9 o'clock on Saturday morning until 11. And also, I want to extend a special invitation to council members to, if you can, attend the Anti-Poverty Commission Economic Development Task Force meeting. if you can, attend the Anti-Poverty Commission Economic Development Task Force meeting on Tuesday, October the 15th, at 12:00 noon on the 5th floor. There will be a special guest from Charlottesville that is coming down, that works with a initiative called Charlottesville Works, which is a business-driven initiative that provides jobs for families that are living in poverty and helping them to achieve self-sustainability. The guest speaker will also be making a presentation, if you cannot make the 12:00 here in City Hall on the 2nd floor that afternoon, to the Citizen Advisory Board, and that meeting is scheduled for 5:30 on Tuesday. We really would like to show our guests that the city is behind the anti-poverty initiative and would ask council members that can attend to attend. On October the 21st, the Holland Park Quality of Life Team will be meeting at Anne Hotty Park at 6:30 on October 21st. And the Holland Park Community's grand opening of Holland Grove was held last week, Thursday, where we had 128 units, open ribbon-cutting ceremony, and they are currently taking applications and expect to have met their capacity by January of this upcoming year. There will be a presentation to the Richmond Public Schools Board on the 21st of October as well, in regards to the rescheduling for construction of the Overton Shepherd School. And I think that meeting starts at 6:00 on the 21st of October. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody forget anything? Okay. The FAN District Association will hold a forum, I don't know if anybody's heard anything about this or not yet, on the Floyd Avenue Bike Boulevard. It's going to be on October 23rd from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at Benford Middle School. That's at 1701 Floyd Avenue. The city's pedestrian bicycle and trails coordinator, Jake Helmbolt, will make a presentation, followed by a question-and-answer session. Encourage everyone to come out, not just if you live on Floyd, but if you live on any of the streets that may be impacted by this change in traffic. In Rosedale, the pumpkin patch days are coming. That's at Ginter Park United Methodist, 1010 West Laburnum. Prices range from 50 cents for the cute little minis to about $55 for the state fair-sized monsters. Robinson Street, the Sidewalk Festival will occur October 18th, 19th, and 20th. The 5th Avenue Holton Harvest Festival will occur Saturday, November 2nd, from noon to 2:00 at 1600 West Laburnum. All funds from that benefit the Richmond Public School, Holton Middle School's outdoor classroom. And lastly, the Holton Middle School has, excuse me, Holton Elementary School, has a new cookbook. So, it's the Dandelion Garden to School Cookbook, and insider recipes for Harvest Festival soups and other favorites, all from Holton families and from Holton teachers. On sale for $20 while supplies last. Lastly, city council went on a retreat on September 30th. We had a council member from Montgomery County, Maryland, come down and speak with us as they went through a similar change in government and explained how their council operates. Senator Tim Kane graced us with his presence and reminded us about the importance of communication and clearly identifiable goals. Former council president and my friend and colleague, Bill Panaly, was there. Our lobbyist, Ron Jordan, presented and moderated for us. We had a former Jaylark head there as well to give a presentation. I think we all came away with a lot to think about and having learned an awful lot. Ms. Ali has condensed that down to easily digestible email that she sent us all last week, asking for our input. If we could each take the time to respond to her, I would greatly appreciate it, and I'll bet you some money that Ms. Ali would probably appreciate it, too. Having said that, if there's no other business, we'll have an introduction of the new papers, and then we'll adjourn. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the introduction paper for this evening, RIS follows. Ordinance Number 2013-211, to transfer and appropriate $394,855 from the school planning and construction project FY 2014 capital budget to the FY 2014 school budget for the installation of specific technology, infrastructure, and equipment in the new Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. Planning Commission, October 21st at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-212, to authorize the CAO to accept $2 million from the Federal Transit Administration and to appropriate the amount for the purpose of funding multimodal improvement on Franklin Street and Main Street Station. Planning Commission, October 21st at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-213, to authorize the CAO to accept $500,000 from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation and to appropriate the amount for the purpose of funding multimodal improvements on Franklin Street and Main Street Station. Planning Commission, October 21st at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-214, to amend and re-oddain Ordinance Number 75-309-302, which was amended by Ordinance Number 2010-200-187 pertaining to the Stony Point Community Unit, for amending the development standards and conditions. Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 22nd at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-215, to authorize the CAO to execute a grant agreement between the city and the Federal Transit Administration for $2 million to fund improvements on Franklin Street and Main Street Station. Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 22nd at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-216, to authorize the CAO to execute a project agreement between the city and the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for $500,000 to fund improvements on Franklin Street and Main Street Station. Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 22nd at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-217, to repeal City Code Section 14-13 and to amend Chapter 14, Article 1 of the City Code by adding a new section, Number 14-17, for the purpose of reflected amendments to Virginia Code Section 15.2-1901. Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 22nd at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-218, to amend City Code Section 14-15 concerning vacant building registration for the purpose of reflected amendments to Virginia Code Section 15.2-1127. Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 22nd at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-219, to amend City Code Section 98-132 for the purpose of providing the residential real estate that has been substantially rehabilitated by replacement or by renovation, and that the construction of an addition for residential use may exceed the total square footage of the structure by no more than 100%. Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 22nd at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-220, to amend pay plan to exclude the classification of communications officer 1, 2, assistant supervisor, and supervisor from the classified service, to include the classification of communication officer, assistant supervisor, supervisor, and manager in the classified service, and to include senior paralegal in the unclassified service for the purpose of establishing new classifications. Governmental Operations Standing Committee, October 24th at 5:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-221, to accept from the Richmond Metropolitan Authority in Eastman, located in the vicinity of North Boulevard, Robin Hood, and Hermitage Roads. Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 22nd at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-222, to authorize the CAO to execute an agreement to lease property at 3003 North Boulevard and property adjacent for management, maintenance, and operation of the diamond and parking ancillary by the Richmond Metropolitan Authority. Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 22nd at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Ordinance Number 2013-223, to authorize the acquisition of property owned by Richmond Metropolitan Authority at 3003 North Boulevard for the purpose of owning, maintaining, and operating a stadium, arena, or sport facility. Planning Commission, October 21st at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Resolution Number 2013-R205, to request that the school board provide the council a three-year plan to improve academic achievement for all students and inform the council concerning the anticipated operating and capital costs. Education and Human Service Standing Committee, October 16th at 5:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Resolution Number 2013-R206, to support an allocation of $10 million through Vida Revenue Sharing Program to provide maintenance, construction assistance to certain transportation projects. Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, October 22nd at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Resolution Number 2013-R207, to recognize the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities, Richmond residents, and biking enthusiasts for the designation of the Richmond Region as a ride center by the International Mountain Biking Association and for planned enhancement at Pocahontas State Park. Governmental Operations Standing Committee, October 24th at 5:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Resolution Number 2013-R208, to request that Amtrak and Vida provide service for the 2014 USA Cycling and Collegic Road National Championships and for the 2015 Union Cyclists International Rail Road World Championships. Governmental Operations Standing Committee, October 24th at 5:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, October 28. Mr. President, that concludes the reading of the new legislation for this evening.
Thank you so much, Madams Clerk. Unless there is any other business, this meeting is adjourned.
Well, lengthy meeting tonight, four hours and 25 minutes roughly, got started just about 6:00 with call to order, followed by appointments and reappointments, awards and presentations, the agenda review and amendments, and then at about 6:30, we got started with the paper that was going to take the majority of the evening, GRTC Care Service Proposal. This would be raising the basic care fare from $2.50 to $3.00 and would raise the extended care fare from $2.50 to $6.00. We had 30 people speak in opposition to this paper. No one spoke in favor of it. And then they called on representatives of GRTC to come down and give an overall explanation of the care service and the extended care service. And then about an hour or so into the program, Dr. Newville moved the paper to continue it for two weeks for further discussion with GRTC to look at whether state funding is possible, other options are possible, et cetera. And also, one of the amendments would push that to effective date from January to July 1st of 2014. Well, then, Council Vice President Robertson came up with the amendment saying that we want, well, it got very confusing after a while because nobody was quite sure, but the bottom line was the amendment boiled down to changing the effective date to July 1st. At that point, Vice President Robertson talked about, let's why don't we just vote this paper down, then get with the GRTC people and see what kind of funds are available, et cetera, and drop with the paper. At that point, that would mean there'd be no increases and no change in service, no, I mean, it would be just the same as it is right now. Well, that was the plan. Finally, the vote was taken, but the paper, instead of being voted down, passed by a 6 to 3 vote. The no vote's coming from Vice President Robertson and Councilwoman Trammell and Newville. And so, after two hours and 42 minutes, the paper was passed, but it does not take effect until January. So, there is a possibility, and I think the intent was that they're going to be working with GRTC to see if there's some way of abating this and possibly not going to a $6.00 fare for the extended care service. But, as it stands right now, the paper as presented was adopted and will take place and take effect in January, as it stands now. And that is probably going to be changed, but we'll have to keep you updated on that. So then we got the citizens' comment period, the consent agenda, expedited consideration. This was the extreme weather conditions paper, that it move, make part of the Public Service Building available. And then we got the minutes approved, reports from council, introduction of papers, and now, some four hours and 25 minutes after we started, we are adjourned for the evening, and we'll look forward to seeing you again in two weeks, October 28th. So, till then, I'm Dick Harmon for Gavel to Gavel. Good night.